Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:12. Thank you for bearing with us for the technical difficulties. It is our Monday, October 5th, regular City Council meeting. We're now called to order. Everyone, please rise if you can and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Marv Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gun.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And City Attorney Fred Riley.
Okay, thank you. So, um, this is a Zoom meeting, obviously, and I can see everyone except for Rita Swope. So if Rita wishes to speak, please get my attention by saying "Mayor," and you will be recognized. I cannot see you raise your hand. And everyone else is able to be seen. So the first item on the agenda tonight, and we have a long agenda, folks. We have thirty items. Last time we did this, we were here till one in the morning, so I'm hoping for the best. But will somebody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move her.
Marv Bean makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's Jody Shirley?
Yes.
That's okay. Discussion, Council. Glenn Gun.
Uh, regarding the consent agenda, I'd like to pull number six and move it to the regular agenda.
Okay, so we have a proposal for pulling item six. Glenn, I'm going to come back and look for the second on that, but I want to say something about the consent agenda also, because although I can't make a motion, I'm going to ask that your motion maybe eclipsed the entire consent agenda. I look at this consent agenda and I see twelve items on it, which actually is greater than what we have on our regular agenda. Um, and Fred, I'm coming to you with these, with a question very shortly, okay? The consent agenda normally is eight, is routine items in nature. They're supposed to be non-controversial. They're supposed to not deviate from past board direction or policy, and they usually don't require board comment. We usually vote on them as a group without any comment. I have in the past said many times that I don't believe that minutes should be in here. There's definitely, there should always be discussion on minutes. I serve on three boards. They're never a consent agenda item. But more disturbing than the minutes, which I do think have to be removed, and I agree with Glenn Gun on that, there are several things on here where we're actually suspending bid requirements, and there's several, actually. There's other items that I'm not even sure what they are. There's stuff about purchasing an ATV or an RTV, accepting curb replacement contracts. I think all of this stuff not only needs comment by the council, but it also, and Fred, this is your question, it's coming, I believe it requires that we open this quest, these questions and ability to comment to the citizens with the open public meetings law. I, I, I look at this consent agenda and I think there's too much in here that we're just trying to push through. Normally consent agenda is like, hey, it's somebody's hundredth birthday and we're wishing them well, or it's National Cancer Month, or something like that. This is, there's controversial items in here and there's discussion items in here. So my point would be to move everything out of the consent agenda, but I'm going to ask you now, Fred, is this consent agenda, the way it's written now, unamended, acceptable and in compliance with the state law regarding the open public meetings law?
I think it certainly is acceptable. How and you want to remove things from the consent agenda?
Fred, you faded out for me in the middle of that. I don't know if, did anybody else, and Jody's nodding her head, so would you just re-say that and say, wait, let me say what you said, please?
Okay, I'll, I'll say it again. Say it a little bit louder. Is that, everybody hear that?
Yes.
Okay. The, the fact that there's a whole bunch of different items in the consent agenda, I don't see that as a problem, because the citizens have the opportunity, if you do not modify the consent agenda, to comment on any given item. So I think you're covered there. If you want to remove items from the consent agenda and discuss them individually, you're, you're certainly able to do that.
Glenn Gun.
I might just throw in, for the, for, for expediency purposes, I mean, we went to the consent agenda to keep things moving quickly. The backup items are in the package for people's review, and perhaps the best way to deal with this is to manage them by exception. If any council member has a question or a concern, it's easy enough to pull it from the consent agenda. If, if there's no concerns or questions, just leave it in there and approve it. Rather than go through every item, you know, agenda, line item by line item, put it in there. If anybody has a question or concern, manage it by exception and ask that to be removed, like I just did, to move it to the regular agenda.
Okay, so why don't I do this? Why don't we just go one by one through the council? If anybody wants to have items removed, and then we'll put one global motion together, if that makes sense? Glenn's nodding, yes, so I think that's it. So Glenn, you spoke first. You wanted item six removed, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, I just have a question on fifteen. And let's see here. Thirteen and fifteen.
So we have six, thirteen, fifteen. Anyone else? I'm going to ask for item ten. And item fourteen, so we have items, right now, we have six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and ten. Does anyone else have anything they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Would someone please give me a motion for everything if possible?
Mayor, just, I'll, I'll give a motion to move whatever we talked about. I don't remember the numbers offhand.
Six, ten, thirteen, and fifteen.
All right, move them to the regular agenda for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, seconds. Any discussion? Citizen discussion? Back to council? The motion is to move item six, ten, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Aki. Councilmember Bean. Councilmember Gaddis.
He's, uh, he's muted, I think.
Councilmember Shirley. Councilmember Swope. Vice Mayor Gun.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor Manzo.
Hi. So item six, ten, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are going to be moved to the regular agenda. Give me one second so I could make that mark on my, on my chart here. Now, the remaining items, uh, well, actually, to, to approve the overall agenda as amended, we have, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Rita Swope has mic. Motion, second.
Second.
Dave Gaddis. Any discussion? Citizens? Back to council?
You want the roll call again?
Yes, please. This is to approve the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Aki.
Hi.
Councilmember Bean.
Hi.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Hi.
Councilmember Shirley.
Hi.
Councilmember Swope.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gun.
Hi.
Mayor Manzo.
Hi. So the motion passes seven to zero. The agenda is approved. We now move to item two on the agenda, which are the citizens' comments. I am going to briefly speak on this after the last meeting. I know that we're not in our regular council session where the code of conduct is visible at display, but there were some issues last time, and particularly there were the issues of individuals not addressing council as a whole. That was one of the problems, and certainly bringing personalities and direct personal attacks in on that. You can't do it, okay? It's that simple. We have fifteen rules here. I'm not, I was, I was going to read a lot of them tonight, and I said, no, you know, we've got too big of an agenda here. But suffice it to say, if you're attacking anyone on this council, you're not doing the right thing, okay? If you do that, you're going to hear a point of order, and when that happens, then please stop speaking. Allow us at the council level and with the city attorney to sort this out. We'll let you know if you're going to be able to continue. I, I'll stress item fifteen. All members of the public are to conduct themselves with decorum, and of course, that goes for us too on the council. We're not asking you to follow any rules that we don't. So with that said, I'm going to open this up to the floor, and please be mindful. Last time, there were a lot of warnings given. I'm not doing it tonight. Yes, Glenn Gun?
Well, I don't think any warnings were given by you during the last citizen comments, because I provided over that portion of the agenda. With respect to that, I think I probably ruled hastily on some of those, those calls regarding a point of order. I've gone back since then, and like you, probably read through all of those codes of conduct, as well as reviewed the charter and how it addresses these sorts of things, and I, I've walked away with a couple of opinions here. First of all is, I find some irony in the fact that we stress First Amendment rights in this, this body, and yet we are very quick to not hear what our citizens and residents have to say. And I think it's a fine line between interpreting statements of fact versus subjective opinions regarding personal attacks. I respect the fact that citizens should address the council as a body and not address individuals. I agree that there should not be questions about personal motives, et cetera, et cetera. But it is, it, an irony that we make some very quick calls to silence our citizens without hearing exactly what they have to say. I think some things that need to be taken into account are the, what it means to be an elected official, and you have to have some thick skin with regards to feedback from our citizens and our residents, and you have to kind of factor that in. So what I would suggest is that we tread extremely lightly on making calls regarding points of order with respect to personal attacks. I think we need to hear what our citizens have to say, and if they are stating their opinions within the confines and the construct of our code of conduct, addressing the body, not questioning personal motives, et cetera, then I think we should err on the side of First Amendment rights and, and I think that's probably enough said there. There is also going to be some conflict, obviously, if there are some questions about personal attacks that are suggestive of the presiding officer, and yet he is going to rule on a point of order. So I think these are some things that we need to consider. The, the elephant in the room, and maybe we need to have a short discussion on that and see if I'm misstating something, or if I, my logic training is going dry here. That's all I have to say.
Well, I, I listen to you respectfully, Mr. Gun, and, or Vice Mayor Gun, and you did preside over the last meeting and made the calls. I don't agree with just about every call you made, but that's beside the point. They were made, it's over with, it's like a baseball game, you don't go back and replay it. If there's one rule in Robert's Rules of Order which is required by our charter to be followed, it is you are to show respect to the individuals up here, and we're to show respect to each other, and we're to show respect to people in the audience. There is nothing that conflicts me out. And for anyone who's coming here to make personal attacks, you're in the wrong room. I will call it every time. How dare people give First Amendment lectures when these people are implicated in a First Amendment lawsuit? Unbelievable. I'm going to move on to citizen comments at this point, okay? If you hear point of order, please stop, okay? We will discuss this if necessary up here. I have the ability to turn to the city attorney, and if it gets to be too much, we will call a break, which is the procedure that we have informally worked out, and then we will discuss it, the city manager, the city attorney, and myself. We'll come back and we'll discuss whether the person will be proceeding or not proceeding. If you've come here to discuss personal lawsuits, I will remind you of item number, um, let's see, hang on, give me one second. Number eleven. You can speak about any matter on the city's business or any matter over which the city council has control. City council does not control us as individuals, nor do they control our personal lives. We don't talk about people's businesses and their pursuits, their individual pursuits. I'm not going to entertain it. I can't speak about it, and no one else will speak about it either, okay? And that goes-
I'd like to call a point of order. I, I don't think anyone here needs a lecture. I, I, I think it's, you've made your point, and I would like to proceed forward with this meeting.
Well, that's wonderful, Dave, but you're not the mayor. I have the floor. You did not call a point of order of any validity, so it's not well-founded, and don't interrupt, please. You're not permitted to interrupt because you're tired of what the person is saying. Now, I'm going to move to citizen comments. I've given the comments and the rules. If I have to, I'll read the ordinance, I have them in front of me. Mr. Riley, be prepared to, to help me with decisions on here. Madam Clerk, are there any, is there anyone who wishes to be heard?
Mayor, I don't have the screen. I'm on a-
Oh, I can't see it. I don't, I can't see if, if individuals wish to be heard. I, I don't see that. I can only see our council.
There's a hand raised, but I, I clicked-
It's Jane, Jane Lochner.
Jane Lochner? Is, is she ready? I see a hand raised. Actually, I do see a hand raised. Is, is her microphone on?
It's not letting me-
I don't hear her.
I, I see her, but I don't have any control over that.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I, I know that Lynn, you are showing as a host, but also Patty is. Even though she can not speak, she should still be able to control the meeting. Even though she's listening on speakerphone, she should still have all of the same controls. Let me go over there real quick. I think star-
I don't know on Zoom where it is. Maybe star six. Ask Jane if she hears you.
Okay, look. It says I'm still connecting, okay? Um, let, I don't want to click anything, got the meeting off, but it says I'm still connecting, so I'm not connected, right? But, look down here, do you want me to try this? Nope, that's not working either, okay?
No, 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 no. We're talking here.
Yeah, I know. But I'm trying to see-
I think Jane can, if she hears-
Jane, can you hear me?
At, tell her to, what is it, star three?
Oh, I don't know. Jane, can you unmute?
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on. She can only unmute whenever you turn, you mute yourself.
Dave?
Because you're also a guest.
When I, but see, what it's showing me is that I'm still connecting. It's just spinning. It's not showing that I'm connected.
We're, we're not there. You're here now. Forget that.
Who are you talking to?
You. You're here. So what does she have to do, Dave? Does she have to mute herself on this phone?
Yes, she needs to mute herself, and then she can authorize Jane Lochner to speak. You can only do one person at a time. So Lynn, if you go back to your desk, you can mute Patty and then unmute Jane.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Let's go here. It's not letting me do anything, Dave.
Lynn, I'm going to try to mute my phone myself, okay? So I'm doing that right now. Now try, try Jane.
No, it's not letting me do anything.
I have a really stupid question, but Dave, can you log in as the host and take control of the meeting so we can get this meeting done? You're muted.
Lynn, are you able to promote me to host?
I'm, I'm, I am just a panelist. I'm not a host myself.
Okay. Let's try this.
Can you try to join it? It's asking you to join.
Let's try this. No?
I, I don't believe it's, it's a problem with Patty or her computer. I see, it's, she's trying to connect to audio, and it's, something's just not right.
Did you hear that, Patty?
Panelist. If you do this, make host. Looks like you can make yourself the host.
Me? Let's see if I can make Dave the host.
Click participants. Click participants. Click panelist tab. Hover over the name of the panelist you want to make the host.
Okay.
And then click on make host. Try it with you. Click on participants. Click the panelist tab. Participants, panelists. Hover over your name. Click on more.
Rename.
Now make host.
And, uh-
On your name.
I, I'm over my name.
And there's now make host?
Mm-hmm. It's rename the participant.
Okay, you clicked on participant, right? Click on participants.
Find participant.
Click, click the panelist tab.
I'm on the panelist tab.
Hover over your name. When you hover, it should say more.
Says rename.
That's what it's doing.
While Patty tries to re, to reconnect, let's, I think we can just go forward with the meeting, and we'll have to have citizens' comments after, at some point.
I would recommend that Patty completely disconnect, reboot her computer, and start over.
Okay, okay. So-
Do you want me to continue, and we will come back to citizen comments?
I think that's prob-
Well, e- even if you do that, you're going to need to have the opportunity for citizens to comment on each measure you, you're going to vote on, so-
Well, we have, we have the presentation of the panelist sheriffs next, and we have the presentation of Whit Blanton next, so maybe we can go to the presentations.
Can I interrupt one second?
Hold on a minute.
Councilmember Gaddis. Councilmember Gaddis, do you see that? I'm trying to leave-
Yes, I do.
Trying to leave this meeting, and it's asking me to make someone else the host.
Make me the host, please.
Wait, wait, she's working now, though.
Uh-
We've got sound, and you're not, no longer, no longer searching for your microphone, Patty.
Well, that's-
No, she's talking on her telephone.
Yeah. And I'm disconnected because I'm leaving the meeting.
Okay. We see your picture.
Yeah. Okay, so I've clicked you, Councilmember Gaddis, and so now do I just disconnect?
Okay, I'm not showing that I'm the host yet.
Okay. You see where I have you checkmarked, though, as the host? Assign and leave.
Okay, do, do that. Go ahead and assign and leave.
Okay.
Okay, I am-
You are the host.
Great, great. Okay, so let's see here. Uh, we have Jane Lochner, and I've just unmuted her.
Jane Lochner, can you hear us?
You hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, the technology works, isn't it, great? I've had the same struggles in the hover all this time.
Thank, thank you for bearing with us. Just give us for your, the record, your name and address, and then please proceed. Is anyone timing this, Mr. Reeves?
I will.
Okay. You have three minutes, Ms. Lochner.
Jane Lochner, three, three, two, zero, High Biscuit Drive West. On nine September 2020, I made citizens' comments that due to a technical glitch were not captured and recorded in the meeting. Those comments and additional comments I will present tonight are statements of fact or not attacks or questioning motives. However, these facts have placed us in an untenable position. I implore the council to consider these facts. First, regarding my comments from nine September, those comments stated that per Florida statute 112 dot 312, subparagraph 21, Miss June Ben Skoyak is a relative of Mr. Joseph Manzo. Per this statute, a relative also includes any other natural person having the same legal residence as a public officer employee unless otherwise specified in this part. Part meaning, part three Code of Ethics for Public Officers' Employees of Florida statute section 112. Mr. Manzo is correct in stating that this Florida statute has two definitions of relative as per discussions with city attorney as documented same at council meeting minutes of one June 2020. She does not fit the definition of relative, so I do not have to recuse myself, and I'm not going to. To be clear, the definition relative under Florida statute section 112, point 3143, subparagraph Charlie, does not include the phrase "some legal res, same legal residence as a public officer," but it only applies to voting conflicts, not the rest of the Florida statute 112, part three. Second, Florida statute section 112, point 311, subparagraph 1 states, "It is essential to proper conduct and operation of government that public officials be independent and impartial in that public office not be used for private gain other than remuneration by, provided by law. That public interest therefore requires that law protect against any conflict of interest established there for the conduct of elected officials and government employees in situations where conflicts may exist." Furthermore, paragraph five of the same statute states, "It is hereby declared to be the policy of state that no officer or employee of a state agency or county, city, or other political subdivision of the state, and no member of the slavery or legislative employee shall have any interest, financial or otherwise, direct or indirect, engaging in business, transaction, or professional activity, or incurring obligation of nature which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties in the public interest." As stated in my first point, a substantial conflict of interest has existed ever since Miss Van Skoyak became the Parks and Rec chairman. While her removal by the council has resolved this conflict of interest, the tension it has caused the last eighteen months has been detrimental to the council in this city. Third, a public officer is a public trust. Public officers are agents of the people and hold decisions for the benefit of the public.
You have three minutes, right? Okay, thank you, Ms. Lochner. Mr. Riley, please unmute yourself.
Yes.
I'm calling upon you now, and I have the right to do this, to explain what it means when there is a voting conflict of interest or any other conflict of interest. Ms. Lochner, and I'll, I'll complete what she had said last time. Called upon my resignation, failed to call upon the resignation of the four individuals that are implicated in the lawsuit, Jody Shirley, Rita Swope, Dave Gaddis, and Glenn Gun. So, does this require all of the council, five people, to resign, or does this simply mean, as I know what the answer is, that you need, if something comes up before the council, to possibly recuse yourself from voting on that, Mr. Riley?
Well, first, I'm going to say, the, here's the, a rule, and I'll cite it if you'd like, that the city council cannot discuss, discuss prospective or pending litigation. So nothing I, I am going to say is related to prospective or pending litigation. The, uh, general scheme in Florida, and scheme does not have a bad connotation, is that a conflict of interest is declared when there's going to be a vote on a certain measure. So, until the point comes when there's a vote, there's typically not an analysis of whether there's a conflict of interest or not. So, I, uh, follow what Ms. Lochner said, and, you know, from memory, a lot of the things she cited sound very familiar to me. Uh, I assume she is citing things in an accurate way, she said she was, so I, I will take her at, at her word. But, at this point, uh, with respect to a conflict of interest, there's not a matter that the city council is voting on, so I don't see any basis for a city council person at this point in time to be addressing conflict of interest about any particular measure.
Okay, thank you very much, and, and, uh, we're not gonna get into any particulars, um, but for the record, no lawsuit has even been filed in this matter, is this correct?
Be discussing anything with, with respect-
Okay. Well, that's public record, anyway.
But you should be discussing it, because that's what your rule says.
Okay. Glenn Gunn and Jody Shirley. Glenn's muted.
Glenn, you're muted.
Glenn is muted. Glenn, you gotta unmute yourself. He's still muted.
There you go, how's that?
Okay.
I'm sorry for that. My question is, that's the second time I've heard my name mentioned with respect to, or regards to a, a lawsuit, and yet I have no knowledge of seeing my name involved in a lawsuit, so I would like to know where that's coming from. I've seen some, some, uh, notices. Fred?
Hello?
Again, Fred, you know what, I'm gonna rule this out of order, we're talking about the lawsuit, so let's stop it, okay? We, the point has been made, at this point, the answer to the question from Ms. Lochner, I think, has been answered, um, and if it hasn't, that's as far as we're gonna go with it tonight, so. Ms. Shirley, did you have anything?
I would like to say something, uh, I, my understanding is that, well, first, I find it interesting, we can speak about the lawsuit if Mr. Manzo wants to speak about it, but no one else can. Um, the, um, our agreement is we don't respond to citizens' comments, we let them say what they're gonna say, and we move on to the next citizen's comment. So I hope this isn't setting a standard for this meeting.
No, it's actually not, we're allowed, I'm allowed to refer something to the appropriate individual, and I referred this to Mr. Riley, so we're not responding to Ms. Lochner, no, there's no more discussion with her, her time is completed, and we're moving on to the next person, if there is a next person, so.
I would hopefully continue the process, thank you.
Will do, absolutely. Mr. Reeves, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? I, I see no one, even though I'm not Mr. Reeves. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, Dave, you're the, you're now the host, okay, so Dave Gaddis, is there, you-
Oh, there is, there is.
I, I have Mike Zabel, okay, Mr. Zabel.
All right. Let's see.
Mr. Zabel, you'll need to unmute.
Okay, yeah, Mike Zabel here, hey, what? Uh, 3320, uh, Highbiscus Drive West, uh, briefly, I was nominated, uh, one of the three people to serve on an additional committee here, but, you know, frankly, uh, I've been around the block, War Hero, Iraq, all that other crap, but, uh, I, I can in good faith serve a council like this, uh, you know, spend my time, my energy, my vast experience, and believe me, it's vast, if you guys wanna, you know, put resumes against me, good luck, you know, you just can't match up. Uh, but, you know, frankly, Mayor, I just can't work for you. So, please pull my, uh, name from the process, thank you.
It is, it is removed, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, I, Dave Gaddis, do you see anyone else? I see no other hands. Uh, no. Okay, then I'm gonna close citizen comments. And we move to the presentation, um, we have Sergeant Roy Swite, uh, from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, Sergeant?
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Uh, the statistics for the month of August, obviously, the statistics for September are not pulled in time for the geocoding and everything, so I have the statistics for the month of August. The UCR Part 1 crimes, uh, for the month, there was an aggravated assault and a burglary. In the aggravated assault, it was domestic-related, and an arrest was made in that. In the burglary, at this time, there's no known suspect, and it, there was entry into a co- a rental condominium in the northern part of the city, and there's no known suspect, so that, as of right now, that one's been made inactive. For the month of August, there were a total of nine arrests, and of course, I mentioned the aggravated assault in that, and the others were for traffic misdemeanors, warrants, and other misdemeanor crimes, and there, nothing really of note. There were a total of 980 events in the city of Bel Air Beach, and those were anywhere from house checks, which dominated the total activity, directed patrols all the way down to noise ordinance violations. And then, for crashes in the city, there were a total of three crashes, and then 171 warnings and citations issued in the city, which goes to show that obviously the deputies are out there conducting the traffic enforcement that's been requested over the month since I've been supervising this squad. That is all I have, if there's any questions.
I don't have a question, but I have a few comments, this is Councilmember Swope.
Good evening.
And I just wanna say that, um, you guys do an impressive job, and I was very, very impressed with the Blue Thunder coming here back in the blue, um, on behalf of the Purcells, which are residents of Bel Air Beach, so I was there and attended that, it was absolutely amazing, so I just wanna let you know that the Blue Thunder, when they came through, um, supported you and represented the blue very well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sergeant, this is Mark Beam, I'd like to thank you guys for doing the undercover car checks the last few days, I've seen you out there, appreciate you doing that, I hope that, um, I saw some of the reports at the end of our, uh, packet, and I saw a few cars there at sixty-five miles an hour, I don't know if that's true or not, but, uh, it's amazing that there were a few out there at that, but I'm glad to see the cars out there, thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Beam, I'll pass that along, typically, the day shift, that goes out there and does that, my deputy that works on my shift, he will go out there periodically and spot-check certain areas, but I will pass that along to the day shifts, Sergeant?
Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted. Sergeant, I wanted to thank you for the work you've been doing, uh, you and, and all the deputies, um, and, uh, the undercover, I, I will let you know, I knew it was working when I got a complaint from a resident, wrote me a letter, um, complaining about the undercover investigation, and I'm not gonna read the letter into the record, but I just wanted to paraphrase what the person was, was complaining about, and I, I want our council to hear this and, uh, see if they wish to take any action upon it. Um, so the individual was complaining that they saw a man in a, in a cap, I'm not gonna even give the color of the cap, um, on the bridge, and they, uh, they sped up coming down the bridge, and they were met by one of your finest at the, uh, at the bottom of the bridge, and they were clocked in at fifty miles an hour coming off of the bridge on our side, um, and he, uh, the individual was complaining to me that this was a, um, uh, what did they call it, a, a speed trap and a quick way to make money and stuff like that, so I just wanted to, um, bring this up to my council's attention and let them know that's what I heard, I haven't answered the individual back, um, we have been asking for this type of enforcement for a year now, and, um, you got 'em, and it sounds like you got even bigger than fifty, you got sixty-fives, and that's, that's unbelievable in a city like us, so, um, I think it's really good, and I would like to speak with this council at a work session about continuing this, uh, this, this work, I think it worked real well for us in terms of having the undercover officers, great job.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll pass it along to the day shift as well.
Anyone else? Dave Gaddis, and you're muted now, Dave, you're unmuted. He's muted.
I, uh, would just like to thank the entire department for really stepping up, uh, your game and, uh, and showing, uh, this city, uh, what, what you're capable of, and also showing, uh, visitors and nearby residents that, uh, Bel Air Beach is not the place to, uh, to be flying up and down the roads, and, uh, definitely, I think that you've made a serious difference, um, I'm, I'm very happy and proud, uh, that you guys are looking out for us, and, uh, I, I really, uh, hope that you're able to keep up the good work.
We will certainly do our best.
Anyone else on council? Dave, uh, Gaddis, would you, is there anyone in the audience, any citizens, that would like to have any ques- any questions?
Uh, checking right now. Uh, yes, I have a hand raised, uh, Jeff.
Okay, if Jeff is unmuted, he can speak? I think he's muted, I think it looks like it's-
Jeff, you're gonna have to unmute and, uh, need you to, uh, state your name and your address, please.
Actually, this is Debbie Keith, I live at 109 Harbor Drive, and, um, I want to, uh, tell Officer Swite that I stand with Beth and Lynn many, many times, and thank you for all you do, and what Beth and Lynn have done for our town, making us look good for the whole community, um, I would love them to be honored. And thank you very much.
Again, thank you, and I will pass it along to all the other shifts as well.
Thank you, Ms. Keith, anyone else?
I, I have no one.
Okay, then I'll close citizen comments, um, Sergeant, thank you, uh, thanks to Sheriff Goldieri, too, he, he had offered this to us, um, it sounds like the experiment went very well, and we will be talking about this, in fact, Mr. Reeves or Ms. Gentry, if we can put this on the next work session to have a follow-up discussion as to where we go from here, uh, with regarding the supplemental patrols.
I just have another comment tonight, this is Councilmember Swope.
One second, one second, Councilmember, I haven't recognized you, Ms. Gentry or Mr. Reeves, did you hear what I had asked, it will be on the next agenda?
Yes, their, their, uh, Captain Liner is putting a report together, but it ended yesterday, so it's gonna be a few days before we get it.
Okay, if we don't have it, then we'll get it done on our next meeting, okay, Rita Swope?
Um, yes, first off, I'd like to echo Debbie Keith's comments about the Purcells, we should look at something to, um, you know, honor them and acknowledge them for, well, for everything they do. And also, Mayor, would you mind going ahead and sending the entire council, I would like to see that letter, uh, a copy of that letter, so we can put it into public record?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have.
Absolutely, I will, I will, I, I think that came to me, actually, via, um, via the City Hall, but if they don't have a copy, I'll send them a copy back of what they already sent me. Do you have that, Patty?
Yes, we do.
They gave it to me, yeah, so you could just, just ask for it from City Hall. Anyone else? Okay, then that concludes it, thank you, uh, thank you, Sergeant, appreciate it. Um, we now have a guest speaker, we have Whit Blanton from Ford Pinellas, he's the executive director, and he's gonna speak with us a little bit tonight, uh, he has a presentation regarding legislative priorities and earmark, so, Mr. Blanton?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, how are you this evening?
Good.
If I'm able to share my screen, I will go ahead and, and do that, although it's disabled, so I can't right now. Bear with me. I, uh, change the role. I promise, I know you have a long meeting, I'll keep my presentation brief.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Blanton, we were given in our packet a copy of your slide, so if we can get this running, fine, if not, the council members do have it, and there's a copy out for the general public on our website, so it can be pulled up that way, it's in the PDF.
That is fine, if you prefer, then I just talk, and I can keep it even, maybe even a little more brief, if you-
Let, let's see what Mr. Gaddis, if he can get yours.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Blanton, uh, I just promoted you to host, uh, I'm, I'm going to kindly ask that whenever you're finished with your presentation, that you, you'll make me the host again.
I will do that, yes, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, very good, well, again, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to be here, um, every year I go around and I try to meet with all the local governments in Pinellas County, and I appreciate a little bit of your time today. Uh, first, you know, our job at Ford Pinellas is to bring state and federal funds to our local government partners, and Mayor, I know I've met with you on the traffic issue, and I wanna applaud your commitment to traffic safety, uh, to address the speeding issues that you're observing in your community. Uh, we have three main mechanisms for bringing transportation dollars, uh, through our programs, uh, to our individual communities, we have a multimodal transportation improvement program, a transportation alternatives program, and a complete streets program. These are apart from our safety initiatives and our work with the Florida Department of Transportation and Pinellas County, just on their own capital improvement programs. What we are working on in Pinellas County is a balanced transportation solution, which focuses on reducing traffic congestion, making our roads safer for everyone, and enhancing transit services, uh, that's sort of the weak leg of our three-legged stool when it comes to our transportation network. The first thing I wanna talk about is our multimodal projects priority list. Ford Pinellas is the MPO for Pinellas County, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, we provide a list of projects for the Department of Transportation at the state level to choose in developing their five-year work program, so they take their direction from us in putting their work program together, unless we're talking about the interstate system. When we have our call for projects, which is open now, the minimum project cost is three hundred and fifty thousand, there is no maximum, we have a maximum of three applications per entity, and all transportation modes are considered, and we evaluate those projects against our long-range plan goals called Advantage Pinellas. This is the first time that we have had a call for transportation projects for local governments, the projects are due, uh, on this list in December, and we look at these different criteria, from safety to mobility to economic growth, equity, environment, and resilience, and all that. The second major program that we have, uh, open is transportation alternatives, these are smaller projects, this is a, um, pedestrian crossing, uh, at West Bay Drive, not far from you, uh, where we focus on pedestrian and bicycle projects, this is a federally funded program, and the money can only be spent on pedestrian and bicycle projects, there are some prerequisites, that there be a local commitment to the project, that can be a letter, um, and there needs to be no right-of-way acquired with these funds. We also require that the local government be able to be, uh, what's called part of the local agency program, they need to be certified in that program, but for smaller communities like Bel Air Beach, typically the county acts as a surrogate and works with you on those kinds of projects to get them done. Finally, our third major program is complete streets, and what we have done with complete streets over the last four years is have a call for projects for, uh, different types of, of projects that make streets safer for all users, whether you're on foot, a bicyclist, or driving a car, and, um, we had, uh, a lot of success over, since 2016, when this program started, the funds are divided into two categories, construction projects, where we award up to a million dollars to help, uh, construct a project, and concept planning, where we award up to a hundred thousand dollars for projects to vet them with the public, to find their, uh, characteristics and, um, and the concept, and then that usually is the basis for awarding the construction, uh, applications, and we apply these on state roads and non-state roads. Next, I wanna talk a little bit about our legislative priorities for the coming year. We have formed a legislative committee, they will be meeting in October for the first time this year, well, for the first time since we took a break over the summer. Uh, last, uh, year, we adopted, uh, a number of policy positions, you can see on the, on the page here, uh, and I'll cover these briefly. First, supporting urban agriculture, um, in a lot of our communities, we have what are called food deserts, where there's no available access to fresh foods, um, and so in those communities, we've worked with the legislature to, um, free up some of the right-to-farm legislation that prohibits some of these areas to provide, uh, food, produce for sale. Next is protecting trust funds, uh, we have two main issues, one is the transportation trust fund, and the other is the housing trust fund, the affordable housing trust fund, the legislature routinely raids those funds for the general revenue fund, uh, and that depletes those funds for necessary dollars in those programs, so we've asked the legislature to protect those funds, and thankfully, this past legislative session, they did that for the first time in probably a dozen years. The next one is support flexible and sustained transportation funding, Pinellas County is, um, in an adverse situation compared to a lot of other counties because of our developed nature, a lot of these funds for transportation that we can work with are- A lot of these funds for transportation that we can work with are limited to projects that can only expand highway capacity, and we don't have that many projects that will add lanes to a road. We can do some turn lanes here and there, but in general, we found that we had almost $400 million in transportation revenues projected through the year 2045 that we would not have projects for. So we've asked the legislature, and will continue to ask, to free up some flexibility so these funds can be used in Pinellas County on projects that still have value but don't necessarily add general-purpose lanes for cars. Stopping distracted driving is another issue. We did have a bill that was approved and signed into law a year ago that reduced texting while driving, made it a primary offense, but you can still have your car and you can still use your phone in your car while driving. So there are some additional steps, and incoming Senator President Wilton Simpson is interested in looking at this, so we're hopeful that we'll make some additional inroads on distracted driving. Next, it's a little bit of inside baseball, but the legislature routinely passes laws or tends to pass laws that change the makeup of metropolitan planning organizations, and we think that decision should be done at the local level as the federal government intended. And then finally, supporting home rule on a number of fronts, particularly vacation rentals. The legislature has removed the authority of local governments to govern themselves, and we stand with the Sun Coast League of Cities and others to support home rule in a lot of its areas. One example of that, last year, we had a bill that made it all the way through the House and almost all the way through the Senate that would have restricted our ability to have the flashing yellow beacons, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, at mid-block crossings. And you see those throughout Pinellas County. It would have required that those beacons be turned red, and if they couldn't be turned red within one year, that they be removed from that location. These are governed by the US government, and they would not be able to be turned red, certainly not within a year. And so that was a bad bill that would have put the onus on the local government to pay the cost of removing all of these. And we have over 400 in Pinellas County, and they are very safe measures to facilitate people crossing the street. And you probably can't put a traffic signal where many of these are located. So we expect this bill to come back. We've heard that it will come back, and we would ask for support in continuing to resist this one. Some legislative issues to monitor for 2021. We have heard that there's at least one city in Pinellas County that would like to broaden the ability of local governments to use the penny for Pinellas to fund affordable housing. Currently, that cannot be used for anything other than land acquisition, so we expect that bill to be filed this year. Certainly, the budget reductions due to COVID-19 are forefront of our legislative session this year. We've already seen about a $1.5 billion reduction in transportation funding through sales tax losses and gas tax losses to the state. So we are working to prevent substantial cuts in our work program for transportation. And you can see this list here, but again, restricting vacation rentals is something that we want to see restored, on the ability of local governments to at least regulate that, and then also to provide state funding for resiliency and resilience planning. One of the things that we deal with a lot is earmarks, legislative earmarks, and these are requests directly to a legislative delegation member to put something in the budget on behalf of a local government. When it comes to transportation, this does present a problem for us, because earmarks come out of money that's already allocated to the transportation trust fund, so they don't grow the funding pie. In essence, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. Earmarks that are local projects force other priority projects that are already on the priority list out. And if the governor vetoes the earmark project, that money is gone from the budget. It doesn't get restored, so the budget is just simply reduced by that amount. And DOT, the Florida DOT, is prohibited from working on that project for a year. So for instance, if the money is already being spent on design, and you ask for an earmark for construction and it's vetoed, then DOT has to stop the design work, too, at least for a year. And then finally, earmark projects are only for one phase of a project, so if you ask for an earmark for, say, design, but you're still in the planning phase and you need planning money, then that money really can't be used that way. And we had that problem on the Memorial Causeway Bridge recently, about a year or two ago, where we had an earmark for design, but we didn't even have a concept. And so without a planning concept, the city of Clearwater was at odds with the DOT on the design, and ultimately, the project did not advance. So be careful what you ask for. It's really important that you ask for the right thing. And just last year, we saw that a goodwill earmark for our regional transit authority meant that our local transit agency lost $1 million that was slated for a project that it had funding for. And another earmark in Hillsborough County eliminated five safety projects, because when an earmark is granted and approved in the budget, the Florida Department of Transportation has to fund that project. And they are looking, especially in a lean year, for ways to make up that revenue. So we can work with you and help if you are looking and thinking about an earmark. Reach out to us, and we can work with you to find other sources of funds, if possible. For instance, safety funds through our Highway Safety Improvement Program and Safe Routes to Schools can be used. One of our grant programs can be used. Or we could maybe work with the county or the state to prioritize the project higher on the list. So if there's anything we can do to work with you on that, I'm happy to help. And finally, I just want to let you know that I am a resource to the city. I'm happy to be helpful in any way possible. We do deal with the congestion issue, and I know, Mayor, we've sat down a couple of times, and we've worked with the county to extend some of the turn lanes and work with you on the feedback signs and other mechanisms to help facilitate the flow of traffic through the town. And again, we'll continue to do that. And I'll open it up to any questions that you have for me, and again, I thank you for your time.
Whit, first, I want to thank you, not only for this presentation, but for the time that you gave our city. You did, as you said a couple times, you did meet with myself and Lynn Reeves. We worked on the traffic issues, and I think it has made some difference. I think they've been working on those lights and some of the other traffic flows, so that's been helpful. I just wanted to, and this is my personal opinion, it's not something that our council has voted on or anything, but that whole idea of the crossings and your resistance to that, please continue that. I shudder to think what the traffic problems would be if we had to turn those all into lights, and I think that's what the proposal was, that those would actually have to be stoplights. We'd go from having one stoplight in our city to, I think, about four or five, and I think Gulf Boulevard would just be an absolute nightmare. So it may work in certain cities, and I think it may have its merit, but I don't think it works in all cities. In a city like ours, it would just destroy the already, you know, not-so-good traffic on a weekend in the peak season. So thank you. I'm gonna open it up and see if anyone, your comments, of course, and then if anybody else in council has comments.
Wilt, question for you. On the weekends out here, trying to get out of a side street in Bel Air Beach, I don't care if you're south or north. The north is worse. Trying to get out, let's say, I'm coming from the inner, you know, from on 22nd Street trying to go south. There's no way in the world that you can pull out of there safely with the speed at 40. I mean, let's face it, it's posted at 35. There's a five-mile-an-hour leeway. That means you've got traffic moving 40 miles an hour either way. So pulling out, and then you have the bicycles in the bicycle lane. If you try to nose out in traffic to get somebody to try to be kind enough to let you out, you get the worst looks in the world, and they go in front of you, and then they're in a line of being hit of north-moving traffic. I don't know what you can come up with as far as an idea to break the traffic long enough for someone to pull out of any of our streets on the north or south end, or even go so far as to pull out our neighbors' driveways that are on Bel Air Shore. You can't. It's just an unsafe situation. So I suggested at one time to take the Coast Guard station and put a bridge across the water, you know, just to alleviate some of the traffic. I mean, I know it's a crazy thing, but you just mentioned earlier in the conversation you had some extra money. Well, put another bridge in, maybe that'll help, you know, make Bel Air Beach a dead end, so you can't go to Clearwater. I don't know what the answer is, but please help us out in that situation.
Thank you for that. I certainly understand the frustration that you all have, and having lived in Bel Air Bluff for a little while, I experienced it, so I saw it from that side. We will continue to work with you on whatever we can do. I'm not sure a new bridge is imminent, but we can think about what that might do and some other mechanisms. Certainly, speed management is an issue on Gulf Boulevard. I just got done working with the city of Indian Rocks Beach, and they are working to reinforce the 30-mile-an-hour speed limits that they have through their town, and when it's not congested, you'd be surprised how many people are at 40, 45 miles an hour going down Gulf Boulevard. So I hear you.
All right, thank you very much. Jody Shirley?
Yeah, just thank you for the presentation. It was very helpful, but something you mentioned was that there's federal funding available for pedestrian crossings, and I know this has been something we've talked about, and it might be something to discuss further at a work session, but I think we need to add a couple of crosswalks, because we have so many beach accesses and things like that that people are crossing, you know, mid-block, and there's kind of some stretches between crosswalks that, you know, there's a good half mile in between, and if you live on one of those side streets, it's hard to get to the beach. So just something we might want to discuss further with you about that. If, you know, the council is on board and we discussed it in a work session, maybe we can bring you in when we talk about it.
If you have some specific locations in mind, we'd be happy to look at those and work with the county on getting some type of device installed. And one thing about those rapid flashing beacons, they do create gaps in traffic for people needing to get out when they're pressed, so they can't help.
Yes, thank you. That was it. Thank you so much, Your Honor.
Glenn Gunn?
One area that I express concern about is if you're on Gulf Boulevard going south and you get to the light that crosses the Causeway Bridge there, we've created a bottleneck because the left-turn lane that goes back across the Causeway is often backed up, and we have a traffic island there, which causes a bottleneck right there that really prevents the traffic. I've discussed with Lynn Reeves the possibility of changing that, so that maybe there's actually three lanes at that stoplight, and maybe why not just convert a second lane to make that left turn as well? And there's emerging a lane that comes north off of Gulf Boulevard to cross the Causeway as well. I mean, perhaps just take a look at that intersection and see if there are ways to handle that traffic and maybe move the traffic returning back across the Causeway a little bit quicker. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, so just so I understand, you're talking about the southbound left turn to go back over the Causeway?
That's correct. There's three lanes. There's a left-turn lane that takes you back across the Causeway to the main landmass, but then there's two lanes that go south, and why not just convert a second lane to the left-turn lane and maybe unclog the traffic that backs up because of that traffic island that was just placed too close to the intersection?
Okay. I'll talk with the county about that. That may be something we can work with, and I think you do have a little bit of right-of-way to work with there in that location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for first comments? I see Marv has his hand up. I'm gonna come back to him, but anybody else for first comments? Okay, Marv?
Yeah, Glenn, I don't want to argue with that on that. I know the island has been a discussion. Wilt, if you could get in on the conversation, or at least listen. We've talked about it, but the problem is the people on those first two streets going northbound after the turn off the Causeway going north on Gulf Boulevard. Now that we've added a, you can make a right turn with that red light, there's a continuous flow of traffic, and nobody living in those two streets on the weekend can get out of there. So that, you know, at least with the island there, it blocks the cars. At least they can get in the middle lane to go south. But without that island there, you can't. So, and Glenn, excuse me for, you know, getting in on this one, but maybe you have two lanes going south, and you've got the ability in that intersection to take the two eastbound lanes, a turning lane and a middle lane, and turn those into the Causeway. You could. It's possible. So and then the far-right lane would be a continuous flow, but you could make the center lane either a left turn or straight ahead, and that may help, because you have enough room on Causeway Boulevard to pull another car in there. We have that ability on the southbound side, where there's ability there to make a left-hand or right-hand turn with that southbound lane. So you could intermingle those two. That's a possibility. It's something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make a comment. This is Councilmember Swope. Is there any way we can just put this on the work session agenda? I mean, obviously, we need to have a more lengthy or discussion about it, and so we can also get a consensus with the entire council. So I was wondering if we can just move this topic to a work session?
Mr. Reeves or Patty?
That's a great idea.
Yes, it seems to have consensus. I just want, I'm looking for acknowledgement from either Lynn or Patty.
Yes.
Everyone's nodding yes on the count.
We can add it to the work session.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Mr. Blanton, sorry to interrupt. Can you make me host again so that...
I hadn't forgotten, but I'm not sure I know how. So let me try and figure this out.
You should be able, click on my, right-click on my name, and Marv wishes more, and make me host.
Dave, did you have comments? Because Glenn has his hand up.
No, no, I just didn't want him to disappear and...
Okay. And I just saw something pop up that says you're the host. Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that my comments were not to tell you how to build the watch. I'm just trying to identify an area that I think there may be some opportunities for us to manage to get more efficiency out of the traffic from there. That's all.
Understood.
Give it to the experts to figure out how to do it. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you very much. Any other council comments, and I'm gonna open it up to the citizens. Dave, I guess you're the one polling the citizens. Are there any citizens that wish to be heard on this, or speak to Wilt? Whit, oh, sorry, Whit. Marv started calling you Wilt, now I'm doing it. It's Whit Blanton. I'm sorry.
Just don't call me late for dinner.
There are no citizens who are requesting a call, right? Is there any last council comments before we thank Mr. Blanton again? I have one.
Sure.
I think the underlying issue is not going to be Gulf Boulevard. No matter what you do, this problem will continue and will only continue to get worse until something is done with the city of Clearwater Beach and their overdevelopment. This is never gonna stop. They keep building hotels. I don't know what they've done with our code, but they are wrecking our town with their traffic, and it is absolutely unfair to this city, and something needs to be done about it. You can put eight lanes out there, they will fill them all.
Good point, Dave.
Anyone else? Whit, thank you again. We'll meet in a council session and a work session, and most likely, I'm pretty certain our city manager will be back in touch with you with whatever comes of that, and we look forward to working with you in the future, and thank you for all the work you did for us in the past here.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks again for coming out tonight.
All right.
All right. What we have now is the consent agenda as we've adjusted it. So we have, if I have this correct, we have, what remains on the consent agenda is items 5, 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, 16, and 17. I have to ask, so I'm gonna have to read through it twice, because I have to ask that somebody give a motion and then that somebody second it, so bear with me and let me go through these as quickly as I can. So this will be, I'm gonna be asking for a motion to place the following items before us in total on the consent agenda. Item 5, approval of the August 3, 2020 city council meeting. Item 7, approval of the September... Item seven, approval of the September 21, 2020 final budget public hearing minutes. Item eight, authorize the city manager to advertise for professional auditing services. Item nine, authorization to advertise a request for proposal for a security camera system for the community center. Item 11, consideration to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County. That's penny four assistance. Item 12, authorization to execute grant agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program, C E S F, $25,000 grant. Item 16, authorization to accept proposal with pricing from City of Clearwater contract number 16-016EN for curb replacement on Bellevue Estates Island. And item 17, authorization to purchase a Kubota RTV off of the Florida Sheriff's Association contract to replacement for existing model that we have. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. There's no discussion on consent agenda. So now we're gonna move to, I'm gonna call the question. I have to read through it again. So all of these will be voted on. A yes vote approves all of them. Item five, approval of August 3, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Marv, I'm sorry, I see a hand up.
Yes, I have a question. I stated 15. I should have stated 16. Lynn, just a quick question for you. Did we forget Louisa Drive on the curbs?
Could we hang on a second? Before you do that, I'm not gonna stop it, but I need consensus from the council to dispense with the agenda right now because we have a set agenda. Does anyone have a problem with him asking this question? I see no objection. Proceed, Marv. Glenn?
Yeah, Marv, the curbs on Louisa are not in bad shape. And the other issue is the funding that we have available. So we went through and looked at the streets with the worst curbs and that's what we're replacing with the funding that we have available for the curbs.
Alright, I did have some neighbors that are complaining about the cul-de-sac area on the east side.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that, but we looked at the curbs. They weren't...
Yeah, no, I know. They've been replaced a number of years ago. You got a couple of those spots, but it's not bad.
Right.
But just the end of the Louisa that's kind of been questioned there, that's all.
Okay, are we ready to call the question for consent agenda? Okay, a yes vote will approve all of these. It's item five, approval of August 3, 2020 city council meeting minutes. Item seven, approval of September 21, 2020 final budget public hearing minutes. Item eight, authorize the city manager to advertise for professional auditing services. That's for Salt Marsh contract that's expiring in 2021. Item nine, authorization to advertise a request for proposal for a security camera system for the community center. Item 11, consideration to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County. That's penny four assistance. Item 12, authorization to execute grant agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program, $25,000 grant. Item 16, authorization to accept proposal with pricing from City of Clearwater contract number 16-016EN for curb replacement on Bellevue Estates Island. It's replacing the valley curbs on Donato Alita and 22nd Street East of the Bridge. Finally, authorization to purchase a Kubota RTV off the Florida Sheriff's Association contract. It replaces a Gravely Trecker that we have now. Madam Clerk, so a yes vote approves all of these. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So the consent agenda is passed seven to zero. All of those items, number five, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 16, and 17 are all passed. City Manager, please take the appropriate actions on all of them.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you for setting that up. Okay, so now we go into the regular agenda. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take them in the order of the ones that got removed from the consent agenda. So we're gonna have, we have items six, item 10, 13, 14, 15, and then we'll get on what's typed as regular agenda on our agenda packet over here. That's number 18. So the first item is on the consent, on the regular agenda is approval of the September 9, 2020 city council meeting and first budget public hearing minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Glenn Gunn makes the motion. A second?
Second.
Rita Swope is the second. Glenn Gunn, comments? Council comments?
Yes, I pulled this one from the consent agenda only because what I would like to do is I read through it. There's a little ambiguity here because it opens as the meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM by Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn. And yet in the wall caller shows everyone there. So what I would like to ask is that we clarify in the opening of the minister why the vice presided over the meeting and yet the mayor's in attendance. So I understand, I would just like to note that the mayor was out of pocket for whatever reason. He was stuck in traffic or whatever. And he was calling in. And also, when I was notified that I would be presiding over the meeting, that's all I asked. So annotate why the vice was presiding over the meeting, vice the mayor, instead of the mayor, I'm sorry. And also, when the notification came down, that's all I asked.
And to respond to Glenn Gunn, that's an accurate description. I was stuck in traffic. I was on time. I called in telephonically. But because I was driving a car and could not see anyone, there was no way I could possibly host the meeting. So the vice mayor hosted it until I returned back. And I think I was back in about a half an hour or so. So that's, I have no objection. So the first amendment or adjustment is to annotate that per what we just said. I'm gonna do this as, if we can get consensus, we can do this as one amendment. It's like we did with the other, with the other motion. It's up to the council. I'll take them individually if you want. But council, I'm gonna have a couple, but I have a couple things I want to add. Dave Gaddis, give me a thumbs up. See if you agree. If not, we can split them out. Anyone else? I had some comments, but did anyone else have any comments?
On the minutes?
Yes.
No.
I wanted to just add, there was comments by Mr. Mark Goldman. And I guess the audio for some reason didn't record or was erased or I don't know what happened, but it's not on the, it's not on our website. And so what I recall Mr. Goldman saying was that he had received a letter. And again, we're not gonna talk about the detail of the letter, but the letter pertained to the litigation. And he said that he was, well, the quotes that I remembered and what I wrote down after I got home was, he said, "This is extortion and this is blackmail." And I think those are pretty strong words. So I think that should be reflected in here. And he said that he wanted to subpoena the documents. I think the rest of this is correct. He wanted to subpoena documents and records from the individual. And then he called upon council and the city to become involved along with the police. So that's the way I remember that. And I know other people heard the same thing. So I would like to just change it to reflect those direct comments and that he wanted to subpoena documents and records. Anybody hear anything different?
I think the unfortunate thing is there's no recording of it. So it's hard to quote when we don't have a recording of it.
Alright. I just remember those quotes and again, so. Any other?
Councilmember Swope.
I have Dave Gaddis's hands first. Hang on, Rita Swope. Go ahead, David.
I think the problem is, is that Ms. Gentry is probably a little confused as to when her verbatim recorder should be turned on and when it should be turned off. I don't know exactly what he stated because I can't see it and I can't hear it. But we just want to be careful. I've never actually heard citizen comments being entered into the minutes. So maybe there have been a few times, but we're not on public record or they're not on public record the same way that we are whenever they're addressing. We're strictly recording minutes. So I don't know what the best way is to handle this, but I just thought I'd add that.
Rita Swope was next. Then Glenn Gunn.
Yes, I just wanted to say I don't want to see anything added off of somebody's memory. I think if we want to reach out to him and ask him what he said, then that's fine. So we can get an exact quote. But since we don't have it on audio or video, I don't want to go with the format that we're gonna just put in words that he may or may not have said.
Glenn Gunn?
I agree with Rita. I don't think we're in a position where we can, based on recollection of a conversation or a statement made a month ago, enter words for somebody else into a public record. That doesn't make any sense. And I think that's a pretty slippery slope to start down. So I'm against that completely. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alright, so we're gonna split the, well, I can't make a proposal. I know what I heard. There were witnesses who heard it. And obviously, it doesn't matter whether it's in the record or not. So I'm going to ask that a motion be made for that. And we'll split them out. So we have my motion to annotate the record for the comments of Mr. Goldman as I heard them and others heard them. And that is the first motion. Does anybody want to make that motion? No one makes the motion. That dies. Then we have Glenn Gunn's comments. And Mr. Gunn, state them again, please.
Yes, that the vice mayor was asked to preside over the meeting initially, informed two minutes before the meeting started because the mayor was stuck in traffic. And although he was able to call in, he was not in a position to preside over the meeting.
That's your motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Okay, so this is the, this is to the amendment only, as Glenn Gunn stated it. I'm not gonna say it verbatim, but basically to explain that he was hosting the meeting because I was stuck in traffic. And he was informed a couple minutes prior to 6:00 PM. I don't know what the exact time was I was driving. So I kinda don't think we should be putting times in unless somebody has an exact time. It's immaterial. But you were informed right before the meeting. I know that because there were some technical difficulties on getting in. So I would agree to, you know, this is if we're just gonna say why you're hosting it. Anyway, so the question before us is, state it exactly how you want it, Mr. Gunn.
You can make me repeat it now.
Well, because I don't want to call your questions. I'm gonna defer to you on this one.
The meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM by Vice Mayor Gunn because Mayor Manzo was stuck in traffic and unable to preside over the meeting initially. Vice Mayor Gunn was notified a couple minutes before the meeting and presided over the meeting.
I'm fine. Okay. So that's what the question, we're just voting on that question to amend the minutes for that, to add that question, to add that piece of information to it. A yes vote will add that in. Then we'll approve the entire minutes. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Aki.
Yes.
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Alright, so that addition is now added to the minutes. Patty will make that change once we approve these minutes. And now the motion is, and now the question is to approve the minutes as amended. Item six, approval of the September 9, 2020 city council minutes as amended. That's also the first budget public hearing minutes. Madam Clerk, please call.
Councilmember Aki.
Yes.
Councilmember Bean.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So the minutes as amended are approved. Patty, you will make that change and then supplement the official record, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Give me one second. I'm X-ing out everything we've completed. We're through the first page. We're now on item 10, which was moved into the regular agenda. That is the authorization to advertise a request for proposal for a digital sign for the community center. The explanation is to upgrade to digital recommended by the Communication Advisory Committee. Staff recommends replacement to digital following damage to existing signs. So I need a motion first.
So moved.
Rita Swope makes the motion.
Aye.
And a second by Marv. Bean, it's open for comments, beginning with Rita.
I'll defer to the city manager, Lynn Reeves.
Mr. Reeves, you have the floor.
Yeah, this is just a request to try to start the process because, as you know, we, our sign was damaged. We have filed an insurance claim and this is just a way to try to expedite what we're doing moving forward. What will happen basically is we'll get some designs and the council will make the recommendation of the final design.
Mr. Reeves, I have a question for you. I know we've kicked this around a few times about this digital sign. I was not on council the last time a digital sign was proposed in the city. But as I recall, it brought out an outpouring of sentiment to City Hall and not all of it was positive. In fact, I think most of it was negative. I realize it was in a different location. I realize it might be a different sign. But I also realize that the citizens may feel strongly about this. We're in a residential neighborhood. We have houses surrounding us. And my concern is that we're moving forward without really having the opportunity to discuss this fully. I realize you want to just get a price at this point, but are we getting prices for regular signs too? Because I want this to be a fair fight here. And I want to hear from the citizens before we authorize anything on a go-forward basis. There's no harm in getting a price. That's not a problem. But I don't want the rumor to get out that it's a done deal and we're putting up a sign. You know, I think the folks need to have their input on this. So Glenn, I'll come to you next. I just want to ask Mr. Reeves just comment on that.
Well, Mayor, I know you weren't on council at the time. The issue was where the sign location was. Actually, at the meeting that they discussed, they didn't have a problem with if we did a digital sign in front of City Hall at that time. And the issue was where they were trying, we were talking about using the penny for Pinellas money on Gulf Boulevard. We had this discussion with the Communications Committee and there's some things going forward. It's kinda ironic that the sign was destroyed. And so it's a time that we need to go forward with some concepts at least. And we will bring those designs to you to look at before we go forward with any pricing.
Lynn, I know you told me that night when it fell down and I had asked you, is it salvageable? I imagine by seeing this, it's probably not. But can I hear that from you?
No, it, we went out and got some quotes to replace it as it exists. And they came in, I think the lowest was 13. We got one that was 17.5. And we got one that was 20,000. They said you need to start over.
Glenn Gunn, I know you had your hand up.
I just, one comment and one question. Yes, I would say the most current input you have. And they are from the citizens because the recommendation came from the Communications Committee, which was comprised majority-wise by our citizens and residents. So that's the opinion of the residents most currently. And secondly, a question just to city managers, do you have a ruffle or magnitude for what you're setting aside in the budget for this? Just a rough idea?
Well, we have $30,000 set aside in the budget through this year. The sign was insured for $8,000 because that's what it cost when it was built. However, we have a, I call it a blanket, that they will pay us for, you know, whatever the best price we can get to replace it apples to apples. And so I'm expecting we'll probably get from insurance $10,000 or $11,000, I'm guessing. And what the Communication Committee recommended at the time, we were gonna use that existing sign... sign and put it in a V shape. Well, now we'll be able to create a V-shaped sign that people can see from both directions. So going forward, I think that amount of money should take care of it.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Jody Shirley.
Yeah, just when you're getting pricing, I agree with Mayor Manzo that we need to do both a digital versus standard monument sign comparison so we know what we're looking at. I do recall the prior digital sign conversation. And there were a number of residents not in support of it. And I wasn't in big support of it. I don't think that, you know, we're a small town. And, you know, I know it's a good use for communication. But then the flip side is I'm not so sure that it's the best use of communication when you're communicating to all the people that use our road for access, for beach access, right? So we're communicating to all the surrounding neighborhoods, whatever it is, to try and tell residents. So I don't know. I'm kind of torn on the whole digital sign. But so I just want to make sure we're getting some good comparisons and that we ask versus scaled renderings so that when we look at it as council, we know what we're looking at because the last one we got, we had no information like that. So that would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, I have a scaled rendering of the existing sign. And, you know, we'll have that to look at also. But we'll try to get some other concepts.
Dave, I'll come to you in a second. Jody, do you want to make an amendment proposal to make this for both RFP for a digital and a...I don't know if you'd call it a conventional sign?
Yeah, I would call it a monument sign is what I would call it. So I would say, yeah, a digital sign and a conventional monument sign. So I'd like to amend the request for proposal to include those two items and be certain that it includes scaled drawings of both.
So it'll be authorized to advertise a request for proposal for a digital and conventional monument sign for the community center with scaled drawings?
Correct.
Well, the scaled drawings have to come anyway because you've got to get a permit. So that's really...
Oh, yeah, we had this last time you presented this to us. And we have to...so we need to have to look at.
So is it okay, Jody, to eliminate the scaled drawings for the RFP?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So we have a proposal by Jody Shirley to amend this item to now include a conventional monument sign. That's the adjustment. I now have to take that in its order. So do we have a second on that? So I haven't had the opportunity to speak. Are we... I'm going to come back to you, but I have to take...she has an amendment right now. So I have to deal with the amendment first, then we're going to get back to you. I have not forgotten about you. Do I have a second on Jody's amendment?
Second, I'm Jody.
Second. So now the discussion goes on just the amendment only, Dave. We will come back to you on the regular sign. We haven't voted on that yet. So this is just on the amendment to add conventional monument sign to the RFP package. I'll jump in. And Jody, I agree with you 100%. I said it. Thank you for supporting me on this. I think let's get both of them so we have something to compare. Dave Gaddis, you have your hand up.
Yes, just so that...just to clarify, I know that we're voting on getting two different types of quotes, and that's fine. Basically, I think what was determined, I'm going to try to refresh everyone's memory, was that we had two...we actually had three problems with a digital sign or with our current sign and a digital sign. The first one was that the current sign was too small and it faced inappropriately for the street. As far as digital sign goes, everyone was afraid that it was going to be colorful and bright and obnoxious. With if you go to the conventional sign like we had, the problem is, is you have small type and you basically can't read it. You have to slow down to be able to read that sign. So what was determined, and it's been brought up several times, and Lynn even showed us examples, was more of like a tablet with a paper white display, only it may be backwards. I may be getting that wrong. But there was a lot of flashy color. It was the only way that we could get a sign that would fit in the footprint and yet have big enough lettering for people to be able to read it, which is you show several, like basically a scrolling, several messages within a few second period. And that's basically what the Communication Committee came up with. And I believe that it was also agreed upon earlier. I really don't know why this went to the wayside. But I don't have a problem with getting both quotes. But I thought we had already nailed this one down. So Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what it sounded like.
Yeah, I was kind of under the impression that what we were talking about was just making sure we got a sign that was readable. And unfortunately, the previous sign, we get complaints constantly that it wasn't readable. They couldn't read it. And part of that could be the location, which unfortunately, that's the location we have. And the other issue would be that I think people are looking at a digital sign as something like they have at the football game. And that's not what we were trying to get. What we were trying to get were, basically, it was a scrolling thing that said, tonight there's a council meeting at 6:00 p.m. Tomorrow, there's, you know, whatever we put on there. So what you're going to get with an RFP with this, you're going to get apples and oranges, just so you're aware. You're going to get apples and oranges. And yes, a monument sign is going to cost less money. But is it going to improve communications, I guess, is the concern I have because of the comments we continually get about there's...I can't read the sign.
I'm going to just try and focus the discussion. The amendment in front of us right now, we don't have to decide tonight which one is better. It's simply to get two bids, and that's all we're asking for right now. And I realize there's various merits to each one. But right now, it's to make the amendment to add, to get two RFPs. I do think there's going to be somewhat lengthy discussion as to which is the best alternative when we get those bids. But it gives us more to compare. So we have an amendment. We have a second. Any other comments on the amendment only? This is to add the monument sign to the package. And I'm going to go to the citizens. Citizens, the only topic right now, we're going to come back to the sign itself. But right now, the only topic is on the amendment. We're adding...the amendment on the floor is to add the conventional monument sign to the bid package.
Oh, wait a minute. I do have one. I have Peggy.
Okay.
And let me...okay, she should be able to talk. You'll have to unmute. There you go.
I'm unmuted. This is Peggy Gatliff, 2228 Denado Drive. I, too, am against a bright and obnoxious sign. So I would like to add or include, or hope that we will stay with a traditional sign. I think we are trying to communicate to our city members and not to the general public going up and down the Beach Boulevard.
Thank you, Ms. Gatliff. Any other citizen comments? Back to council...wait, I think I saw a hand.
I have a Jane Lochner.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, hold on. All right, go ahead, Jane.
Yes, I, too, am...no, Jane Lochner, 3320 Hidiscus Drive West. I, too, am against a bright and obnoxious digital sign. But that is old technology. Technology today allows for the brightness to automatically be adjusted based on the light level so that at night, it is very much reduced in its intensity because you don't need that intensity like during the bright day. And just because it's a digital does not mean it has to be obnoxious. We have control over what we would put on it and how it would be displayed. So, you know, if it was...still had the old sign up, you know, is it worth putting money into to bring it up to digital? Maybe not. But since it's been destroyed by the storm, we're in a different situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
I have none.
Okay, then I'll come back to council with Jody Shirley getting the last word. Glenn Gunn, go ahead.
I think we are jumping to specifics. And rather than say, hey, digital, non-digital, old style, new style, new tech, why don't we just come up with some overarching things? And what I'm saying is, whatever solution we come up with, it needs to be readable by people passing it in their cars. It needs to be unobtrusive and fit within the decor of Bella Beach. It needs to be flexible in usage. It would be nice if an emergency comes up from his vehicle or even at home, Lynn Reeves or the city clerk can get on their iPad and change the sign right on the spot. And last of all, it should be cost-effective and so far as recurring costs, electrical power or whatever, and manpower-wise versus having to get out there and change numbers and letters and stuff. I mean, it's just electronic and done from your office on an iPad or a computer. So rather than say, hey, it has to be this, let's come up with some overarching things of what we desire, rather than just jump to, hey, it has to be digital or non-digital or whatever. And I'd be happy to sit down and help out the city manager, just come up with some overarching specs on this thing.
And again, tonight, and Marv, I've got you coming up. This is just for an RFP. We're not deciding which one is best. Marv, go ahead.
All right, a conversation going back a number of years. Lynn, you may remember it. Jody, you may remember it. We used to have a sign coming west on Causeway Boulevard that says, Welcome to Bella Beach. That sign was moved, Lynn, if I'm correct, to the Marina?
Yes.
And we no longer have a Welcome to Bella Beach sign. So would it be smart to do something across the street from Bella Beach?
I don't think you have the right of way to do that.
Well, we had at one time.
Well, yeah, but the bridge was built and the road got...yeah, that's why that sign was taken out of there.
I know. I remember.
Any other comments on adding the conventional monument sign to the bid package? Jody has the last word before you vote on the amendment only. Jody?
You know, I just...I think what we have here doesn't give us a whole lot of outline. And I'm assuming that Lynn's going to write a better RFP before it goes out. So I would say that, you know, we do need to see some versatility in the signage. And, you know, that's why you hire a sign company. Let them show us some designs and, you know, you put the specs in the RFP and let's go with it. So I just would like to see some variation. That's it. Thank you.
And I'm going to call the question. So this is on the amendment only. The proposal right now is to...we will add to item 10 the requirement that a bid also be approved...be received for what we call a conventional monument sign. If you vote yes for that, that phrase will also be added to item 10, which we will be voting on next. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
All right, so the amendment passes seven to zero. And I will read the new question. I will open it up if there's any other questions, any other comments on that. We still have to go out to the citizens and then back. But what we're now...before our board is number 10, authorization to advertise a request for proposal for a digital sign for the community center and for a conventional monument sign for the community center. Back to council for comments. Glenn?
Couldn't you just say, rather than differentiate digital and monument, why not just a replacement sign?
Because we approved amendment as conventional monument sign. Unless you want to make another amendment.
I'll propose another amendment where we just strike any differentiation between a digital sign or a monument sign and just go out for an RFP for a replacement sign.
Okay, does anyone second that? I'll second it. Dave Gaddis seconded. It's open for discussion. Glenn Gunn, you brought it, so you have first opportunity to speak.
No, I'm just trying to streamline the process rather than, again, tell the experts who build signs how to build a watch, let them come to us and say, hey, we've scoped out your situation and these are the...what you're trying to get at is the flexibility, ease of changing the sign, unobtrusive. Let them come to us and tell us what their recommendations are.
So to understand...Robin, I'm coming right to you. I just want to make sure I understand and frame this properly. So you want this to read, if your amendment passes, authorization to add...correct any of this. That's wrong. Authorization to advertise a request proposal for sign for the community center?
A replacement sign.
Replacement sign, okay. All right, Robin Aki. And then Marv Beam.
I think you guys are making this way more complicated. I mean, really, digital, non-digital, a sign. I think the amendment that Jody passed is good because it gives specifics, digital and non-digital. Those are really the only two options. So I would say, can we just keep this agenda going before my kids graduate high school? This is ridiculous. Let's keep it going, guys. Sorry.
Thank you. Marv Beam.
We came up, we wanted a V-shaped sign. That was what was talked about. So it could be done either way, digital or conventional. One sign, it's either you add a bottom piece to make a digital or you add a bottom piece to make a conventional. Simple. That's all.
Any other council comments? I'm with Robin. I think we have a good thing to vote on right now, and we have 20 more things to do. So but that's just my opinion.
I withdraw my proposed amendment.
Are you...I'm sorry?
I withdraw my proposal.
You're withdrawing it? Okay.
Let's just move forward.
Okay, we will move forward. So we're back to the original item 10...not the original, the amended item 10 that calls for a digital sign and a...two bids for a digital sign and a conventional monument sign. Is there any other comments on that? Any citizen comments? Seeing no citizen...no citizen comments, Mr. Gaddis?
No.
Okay, back to council. I believe about half an hour ago, it was Rita Swope who made this motion. So Dave Gaddis, and then Rita has the last word.
The only thing that I ask is, before we make a decision, we do review what the Communication Committee recommended. So take that into consideration. And that's all I've got to say.
Right, and we're just...this is just for an RFP. This is not for...we're not deciding what we're buying tonight. We don't even have a number in mind right now. Rita Swope, do you have anything to add?
Nothing. Let Glenn call for the question.
I will do that. Okay, so the amended item 10 reads, authorization to advertise a request for proposal for a digital sign and a conventional monument sign for the community center. A yes vote will get that RFP for both of those. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
All right, so it passes seven to zero. City Manager, would you please get the two bids, two RFPs out, and keep us advised as to what's happening, please?
Yeah, we'll have to bring a couple of concepts to you before we do that.
I think that's good. And I think we want to get them on the citizens, to the citizens, too, on that website. Okay, we move on to item 13. I'm not sure if it was me or somebody else that asked for this one. It doesn't really matter. But we moved it out into the regular agenda. It's authorization to suspend bid requirements for the tennis court fence replacement. It's to accept the West Coast Fence Court proposal, $18,921.41. It's in the FY 2021 capital budget. First, I need a motion. First, I need a motion. No move.
No move.
Marv has made the motion. Rita Swope is second. Marv, go ahead.
All right, Lynn, a question for you. Uh, we talked about possible in the future, a roadway between the frontier building and the, um, tennis court. What if we were just to take those two entrances to the tennis court and put them on the east side and the west side? Versus...
We are recommending moving it to one entrance on the west side.
One entrance only on the west side?
Yes.
Okay, fine. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have a question.
Glenn?
Uh, Lynn, could you just explain exactly what is meant when you want to suspend the bid requirements? What, what is being suspended and why do you want to do that?
Well, you know, going out for a bid for a project like this is, is, is something that, uh, typically isn't done and when we do our code review committee, I'm gonna bring to them, you know, we need to update our purchasing guidelines because what it, what it says is anything over ten thousand dollars, uh, you gotta go to, to bid on. So we can be more efficient by getting proposals, which we got three. We went out and got three proposals. That's more efficient than setting up a bid document, advertising it, spending the, uh, time, money, uh, for advertising it in newspaper and doing things like that. Uh, and that, that's why I asked you to suspend the bid requirements because it, it requires that through a, through a bid. And for projects like this, uh, if, we'll use the fence as an example, uh, we could have jumped off a county contract, but that county contract was, uh, through Smith Fence, it was twenty-two thousand dollars. So it's cheaper to get those proposals and it's more efficient. And that's, that's why we asked you to suspend the bid requirements. But when we do the code review, I'm gonna ask you to adjust those because they were probably last adjusted twenty-some years ago.
Glenn?
That, that's all great information and so I would ask that, like, for some of these follow-on ones like 14 and 15, I mean, if you just preface it with the fact that it, for the sake of efficiency and cost savings, we, we want to do it this way, I mean, that, that kind of makes it, in my mind, a no-brainer. Thanks for explaining that, I appreciate it.
Glenn, Glenn's question actually was what I was going to ask, so we, I think we're thinking the same. I, I was wondering why we were suspending this. Our rules, despite the fact that they may be antiquated, do call for, there has to be a unique circumstance. It says where the council finds unique circumstances to establish that competitive bidding is not in the best interest of the city, that's when we can do this. And the reason why I had asked, why we had to move this stuff was because I didn't, that wasn't obvious to me in reading this. So for the future, I think we probably could keep using consent agenda, if you could explain those unique circumstances. In listening to what you've said, it seems like it is a unique circumstance. In fact, you found that the county price is actually in excess of what the private price is, which makes you wonder what our county folks are doing, but, um, that's great. So I'm, I'm totally good with this. Uh, I think we have the unique circumstances and if the council agrees, um, we can, well, we have to, of course, ask for citizen comments, but we'll move this forward. That was my questions and concerns. Anyone else? Dave Gaddis?
Uh, uh, I think, uh, to summarize, Lynn, uh, basically whenever a job does not raise enough money for the bid or they're not going to bid, is that what you're saying?
Right. Because it's, because a bid is a, you know, we use a bid for, you're gonna approve a couple bids later in the, the thing, like for the stormwater and stuff. And, and a lot of times the, the, those bids, you may not even get any bids where you can go get a proposal, they're willing to hand you a proposal, or you can go off of a, a county or state contract. But I've always been of the opinion that, yeah, I'll take your contract, the county contract, but I'm gonna look elsewhere too because sometimes you're not the cheapest. And sometimes they are, depends. Uh, instead of jumping out there on a, a, a contract, which we could have done and just brought it to you and said, hey, we're gonna take it off this contract, but as you can see, it was, I think it was like, it was a four thousand dollars difference, you know? Now, I'm looking at it more as, as the efficiency and, uh, cost savings if we can find it.
That's value.
Any other council comments? Uh, any citizen, would any citizens like to comment?
I don't see anybody, Dave.
I see no citizen comments? Okay, then I'll close. Citizen comments and come back, um, to the, uh, to the council for final word. Marv Beam, it was, um, it was, uh, your, uh, your motion.
No, um, it's fine, no other, no other comments from me. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so the question before us is authorization to suspend the bid requirements for the tennis court fence replacement. Uh, the city manager will accept the West Coast Fence Proposal, eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, forty-one cents. This money is in the FY 2021 capital budget. A yes vote allows him to proceed. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. Um, city manager, you're authorized to proceed forward with that, uh, to, with the suspend the requirements and go forward with that West Coast Fence Proposal. Item 14, authorization to suspend bid requirements for tennis court resurfacing. Uh, this is the acceptance of Welch Tennis Courts Inc.'s proposal, thirteen thousand three hundred twenty dollars. Funding is in the FY 2021 capital budget. Will someone make a motion, please? No move. Dave Gaddis makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Marv Beam is second. Dave Gaddis?
I, I think we're in the exact same position we were in the last, uh, agenda item, uh, which it's not worth taking, uh, the, the time is money and companies are not gonna bid on a small project like this. Lynn Reeves, is that your understanding and is that what you want to tell us?
Yes, uh, same situation. We went out and got three proposals, uh, the, the, the best proposal was from Welch Tennis Court and, uh, they are, uh, in this area, they are one of the premier tennis court resurfacing companies. I mean, they're predominantly used and, uh, actually these three quotes came in very close together, but they were still a little bitter.
And Welch has the better reputation?
Yeah, a lot better, a lot better.
Good. Any other comments by council? Any citizens would like to comment?
None.
I see none. Come back to council. Any comments finishing with Dave Gaddis?
I have none.
No final comments? So item number 14 before us is authorization to suspend the bid requirements for tennis court resurfacing. If you vote yes, city manager is going to accept the Welch Tennis Court Inc. proposal, thirteen thousand two hundred twenty dollars. Funding is in our 2021 capital budget. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
I, I'm sorry, that was broken up. Was that an aye?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. The author, the, uh, city manager, you're authorized to proceed forward with the Welch Ten, Welch Tennis Court Proposal, thirteen thousand two hundred twenty-four resurfacings. We will now move to item 15. Authorization, authorization to suspend bid requirements for CIPP repair of stormwater pipe on Denado Drive. This is to accept the Granite Inliner LLC proposal, eighteen thousand two hundred dollar. Funding is in the 2021 capital budget. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Rita Swope makes the motion. Who else was second?
Second.
Second, Dave Gaddis, Rita Swope.
I think it's probably the exact same thing as 13 and 14, so I don't have any other comments about it.
Anyone else? Marv Beam?
Lynn, we did talk at a prayer meeting, um, in regard to taking core boards of the streets to make sure that the underlying material is enough to hold, except for the areas that were dug up during the undergrounding process to make sure the ground is firm enough.
It, this, this project is slip lining. It's not a new pipe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is slip lining. And I, I don't know if everybody knows what slip lining is.
I was just gonna ask you to explain it to everyone who doesn't know. I know what it is, but go ahead.
I'm thinking about something else. I'm well aware of what you're doing, sorry, I'm, my mind is...
Lynn, tell everyone else who's listening what, what slip lining is.
Slip lining is putting a pipe inside a pipe and they, they, they slip line pipes like, as an example, in this case, it's between two homes. We can't go up and dig two homes up with the pipes, but we can slip line it and it will reinforce the pipe and last for many, many more years, so that's, that's really what it is. It's like putting, uh, blowing a balloon inside it and it explodes and lines the pipe, sort of. And the prices we got, uh, the, uh, person that actually has a contract for it said they were too busy and they wouldn't be able to do it, uh, but the low price was eighteen thousand, the next was twenty, and the next one was twenty-five thousand, so there again, you know, efficiencies and, uh, this company, uh, we, we've checked them out and they're, they're a good company also.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? I'll open it up to the citizens then. There are none. No citizen questions, we bring it back to council with Rita Swope will have the last word. Any council comments before Rita goes? Rita, you have the last word?
I have no other comments, just call for the question.
I will do that. Uh, item 15, authorization to, an authorization to suspend the bid requirements for CIPP repair of stormwater pipe on Denado Drive. This will be the acceptance of the Granite Inliner LLC proposal, eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. The funding is in the 2021 capital budget. Madam, a yes vote allows us to proceed. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. Uh, city manager, you're authorized to go forward with the Granite Inliner Proposal Contract, eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. Okay, folks, we're moving right along. We're actually in what we used to call the regular agenda. Item number 18, we have consideration of appointment of Park and Rec Board members and alternate board members. So we have applicants for board member, we have Carly E. Devlin and Nicole Sussman, and then we have applicants for alternate board member, Deborah Debbie Keith and Nora Kodak. Um, I don't know if anyone's here, we don't, we don't really have to do, um, these, these folks have applied already, so they're automatically on for, uh, for, uh, vote. Um, it, we always turn it over, uh, and, and ask that we continue with this, we always turn it over to any of them who have come here first and then people can make any comments afterward. So is, are any of these individuals in the, uh, audience and would they like to address the council?
No one is asking to speak, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, I do have one. Uh, it's, it's Jeff again, I know it's somebody else, but let me, uh, go ahead and, and...
Okay.
That's Debbie Keith.
I think that's, now it's open.
Hey, Council, I just want to thank you for being, uh, considered. Uh, my husband and I have lived here for over sixteen years and we love Bel Air Beach and I look forward to being part of this board. Um, the members that I met, the positivity and the great ideas, um, really makes it easy for me to say yes to being part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anyone else, any, uh, citizens who wish to comment? Any citizens? Anyone on council have any comments before we go to a vote? Now, here's my problem. Normally we do these votes by paper ballot and I'm not sure how we do this because you have to have individual votes and, and what this is, is we have, first we have the applicants for board member and you can vote for up to two, so you don't have to vote for anyone, you could vote for one, you could vote for two, um, and then the same thing for the alternate. But normally we do this with paper ballot. Uh, madam clerk, what is your recommendation?
I would put that to the city attorney, you know, based on what we're doing with, uh, virtual meetings being allowed, so...
Um, I don't see how you have any way around simply going through and asking each council member whether they're gonna vote for none, one, or two. I mean, I, I don't know how you could do it any other way.
There is a ballot in their packet.
Robin's holding it up. What, what is the preference of, I have no problem going individually, it, it, you know, just having each person polled individually, or would you like to write it out and hold it up to the screen? I could, like, Robin, when you did that, I, I could see you holding the paper up, but I couldn't see what would have been written on it, so it might just be easier, particularly since there's two and two. My suspicion is it'll, everyone will be on these boards in about two minutes, so, um, maybe we just wanna go individually and just ask each person. Everybody, Jody's nodding, Glenn's nodding.
I'm good with individual...
Everybody's up, yeah, so, okay. So madam clerk, if you will poll, and I'm gonna ask you to just poll in a random order, okay? Just, so it should be different, so let's go first for the applicants for board member, just poll in a random order, you do not have to end with me, just end wherever you end, okay?
Okay, um, I, I'm not sure what you're wanting me to ask, or do they understand what they're going to say?
Uh, okay, let me, let me frame the question. So basically we have two applicants for board member. Each council member can vote up to two, you're not compelled to vote for anyone if you don't wish. So, uh, this, the, um, the, uh, clerk, the city clerk will ask who you, uh, wish to vote for, just give her one or two or, well, zero, one or two names, how's that?
Okay. Mayor Manzo?
I vote for both members, Carly Devlin and Nicole Sussman.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Two thumbs up.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Is that one for each, Mr. Gunn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Affirmative for Devlin and Sussman.
Okay.
And I thank them for stepping up.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Devlin and Sussman.
Councilmember Shirley?
Devlin and Sussman.
Councilmember Swope?
Devlin and Sussman.
Councilmember Aki?
Devlin and Sussman.
Councilmember Beam?
Devlin and Sussman.
Okay, that completed, so each person receives unanimously votes and approval. Congratulations, Carly Devlin and Nicole Sussman. Um, you're now on the, uh, your, um, applicant for board membership has been approved, you're on the Parks and Rec Board and I'm sure they'll be having a meeting soon and you'll be able to participate in that. So the next part of this is to, for the alternate board member, same thing. We're gonna ask whether you support, uh, Deborah Debbie Keith and Nora Kodak. You could vote for one, none, or both. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beam?
Both.
Councilmember Aki?
Each and Kodak.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Keith and Kodak.
Councilmember Swope?
Keith and Kodak.
Mayor Manzo?
Keith and Kodak.
Councilmember Shirley?
You did. Keith and Kodak.
And Councilmember Gaddis?
Kodak and Keith. Had to do it in reverse order, huh? Okay. Everyone, it passes unanimously. Debbie Keith receives seven votes, and Kodak receives seven votes. You're the alternate members, and you will also be at the, uh, well, you might have to be at the next meeting, so you might wanna check in with them. Okay. Everybody doing okay? It's eight twenty. We've been going for two hours and twenty minutes. Everybody all right? Wanna keep forging ahead? Dave Gaddis?
I'd like to request a three-minute, uh, break.
Three-minute break? Everybody okay with that? I have eight twenty-two on my computer, so approximately eight twenty-five. Let's everyone be back, okay? So we're back on the record. It's, uh, item nineteen, the consideration of resolution twenty twenty to seventeen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida pertaining to the creation of an ad hoc committee pursuant to the provisions of section two point one zero two of the city code consisting of three residents of the city and two members of the city council to conduct a review of specified sections of the city code and establishing an effective date. This is to establish a committee to review the city code. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Glenn Gunn. Second?
Second.
Second. I think that was Jody Shirley.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Glenn Gunn?
I'll defer to, uh, city manager.
Lynn Reeves?
Um, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, a request that the council had discussed, uh, a couple months ago, and we said we'd do it in the fall. And we advertised for, uh, two-plus months. Uh, we only got three applicants, and now we only have two applicants because one, uh, opted out tonight. And then we would still need the city council members that would wanna participate.
I'm gonna suggest to council that perhaps we maybe discuss this a little further because in looking at this, the first thing that came to mind was that, um, we normally put together a little charter and explain to our committees, our ad hoc committees, exactly what we're looking for. And with this, of course, being our entire code, it is absolutely a voluminous thing to just say, hey, go out and review it all. Um, I think we as council, ha, if we wanna keep this thing in any kind of, uh, a reasonable timeframe and also a reasonable price, because the city attorney's gonna be involved with this review, we need to kind of figure out what we're looking for. I mean, we know that we had certain areas, for example, like our sign ordinance that needs to be worked on. But, you know, do we wanna say to a committee, just go ahead and look at everything? Or do we wanna target certain things? And if it comes down to like constitutionality and legality of laws, we might be better served by, and I'm gonna suggest this, I, I've not spoken with them, but it, it might just be a better review if our city attorney perhaps reviews it and comes back to us. So I'm not so sure. I, I, I agree with this committee, but I, I, I don't know that this is the right time. I think we may have to do a little bit of homework still to, to tell people what we're looking for. That's what I wanted to say.
Just to give you a little update, uh...
And, 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 Lynn, um, Glenn Gunn's gonna be after you. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, just, uh, in the past, what we've done is we've developed the charter after the committee has been established and we've had a meeting with them. Uh, it wasn't typically established prior to, but we would give them specific areas that we were wanting them to look at. As an example, we wanna look at the seawall code. We know that's one of the things we want them to look at. I mentioned, uh, I think we need to look a little bit at our, our purchasing policies, our purchasing ordinances, but that's, those are minuscule things. I'm not saying to change them dramatically. I'm just saying. And then, you know, some other areas that the council may want to do. And, you know, we can give them that speci, speci, shh, whatever.
I was just saying.
Uh, so, uh, you know, I think, uh, we can discuss that further at the work session. If you, you know, the council, that gives them an opportunity to say to us, okay, uh, I think we ought to look at this part of the code. Cause last time we looked, I think, if I remember right, we looked at like five sections, and we focused on those five. And, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be overwhelming. I think it just needs to be on areas that the council feels that are, that are important. Cause you can't do it all at once. That's a big book. It's this thick. So, uh, I think you, you just have to pick and choose, and then we'll do it again later, too.
Glenn Gunn and Marv Beam?
Yeah, I would like to say that, uh, the purpose of this group is to follow on on the great work done by the previous group, okay? This, the, the, the previous group was a all-encompassing review of the codes. This one is gonna be more of a surgical precision kind of thing, okay? The, the, uh, what we're looking to do is plug some of the gaps identified since that last group, plug some of the gaps from the unexpected consequences from the changes we made from the previous group. Uh, we need to, uh, address newly identified problems and along with the strategic plan, some things are starting to bubble to the top like infrastructure as, as well as the seawalls. And I think it's also important to make sure that we have some residents' participations because we're talking code and we really, we, we get a lot of mileage out of having buy-in by the residents. So, um, I, I, I really think this is something we need to, even if necessary, uh, stall and advertise a little bit more, get, get some more participation by the residents. I will be happy to, uh, help the city manager, uh, build a charter for this thing. I, I helped do that on the first one, so I can articulate some of these points and, and, and help the city manager build that stuff. That, that's where I am on this.
Glenn, thank you for that offer. I, I, I'd like, you know, that's what I was leading toward. I, I, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable tonight putting this out. We haven't even discussed it amongst council, who has interest and whom I wanna be on this. I have to make the appointment, but I'm not gonna stand in people's ways. But I, I, by the same token, I, I'd like to know really what we're driving for. And I, I don't know, I don't know it myself, you know? When I look at this as an attorney, I say, well, I've got constitutionality issues. I got a couple parts of this that I have a real problem with. Um, other people have issues that have, you know, come up, and I think everybody has a little bit of an input. So I hate to throw this to a work session, but I, I, I seem to think that we're gonna have to hash this out, and I think you do need that charter in this case, because that will help us determine who are, who's gonna be the best people for this, too. I mean, I, I don't, again, I don't know where the focus is, so it's hard to say who's the best. Right now, we have two people, and, and I, you know, I do think we have to do a little more advertising, um, to have a little bit more, uh, interest and see where the interest lies on council, if any.
Okay, so let me work with the, uh, city manager and help streamline this process. I, I don't know if you wanna table this thing or whatever.
If you make a motion, I can, I can, I can bring it to everyone. If, you know, somebody has to make a motion. I'm sorry, Marv, Marv, I'm sorry, Glenn. Marv had his hand up, and then I'll come back to you if you wanna make that motion, okay? Go ahead, Marv.
Oh, the only thing I'd like to insert is we've got Laura, which is a great value. Uh, she's out there doing the code. She may have a list of things, uh, that she's been out doing that might reflect on any changes we have made or ones that we need to make. And the other thing is a code enforcement officer may, may put a list together for us, uh, things that he's seen that he can't really do anything with because the codes are wrong. Now, we may miss them. So input from these two people, along with Lynn, and I wish we could invite some of the other people that were on that committee before because they have the experience. Um, I wouldn't mind working with them, but I think we need the community involvement a hundred percent here. Because they're gonna say, well, the council did this, the council did that. Nah, it's not a good thing. You need the community to kinda control the whole thing. My view.
Marv, two excellent suggestions about, could you turn that down, please? I'm sorry. I was speaking to somebody who's inside my office here. Uh, the, um, I, I think it's two excellent suggestions to, to bring our code individuals in. I, I think, you know, the, the more information we can get, the better. Um, and I don't wanna see us limited to, I mean, right now, we don't have enough people, but I, I don't, again, I think last time we flexed the, um, communications committee and had extra people on it, um, if we have qualified people, I'd like to see, you know, possibly even a greater group than five if possible. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of perspective on this, and each person has, brings their own special perspective on it, um, looking at different areas of the city. So I, I, I think a lot of people are gonna make for a better code. Mr. Gunn, did you, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, did you want to make a, um, a proposal?
Sure. I, uh, I would also say that this could be a segue for a recommendation from the committee on how best to, to deal with this code enforcement issue. Uh, the city manager's been struggling with how best to organize his staff and dealing with this. We, we've outsourced to the deputy thing, and there's some shortcomings with every way we've looked at this thing. So we might be able to come up with some recommendations. My proposal at this point is that we table this, uh, agenda item until the next, uh, council meeting to give me time to work with the city manager and build a draft charter for a code enforcement review follow-on committee.
Do I have anyone who'd like to second that?
I'll second that one.
Marv Beam seconds it. I'm reaching for my thing. Help me out, Mr. Riley. Do I need, uh, is there debate on the table or not?
Yeah, you can debate it. It's, it's a quick debate.
Okay, um, it's open, well, it's, it's open for council comment on, and on the motion to table. I support.
My only comment would be is we are gonna continue to advertise for positions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah. I tell you to put it on the sign outside, but that's not gonna work, so... Anybody else?
We had it, we, we, we had it on the sign, but it was laying flat.
Glenn Gunn?
I, I was just gonna stress to the council members that we all have our own network also, and maybe put the word out, uh, to stress how important this is and the great results we got from the previous one. So this is an important thing, and resident participation has really looked unfavorable in this thing.
To Glenn Gunn's point, I was actually looking at some of our procedures this morning. We have the ability as individual council members to nominate people, so ask them first, but if they don't say yes, you could still nominate them and get them up. But, you know, maybe twist a few arms, because I think, you know, you know, he mentioned something that we could get some people maybe from, you know, that had served in the past and stuff like that. Um, I don't know. If you know them, reach out to them and see what we can do, okay? There, it's, for those who know them, so it's a possibility. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. And if we're tweaking this, which is, I think, where we're at with this, I think we're probably in consensus with that. We don't need to, um, you know, it, it, the, the, uh, people who have the experience are gonna help. So we've got a motion to table. Um, any other comments on council? I go to the cities, citizens, this is just on the motion to table?
I have none.
No citizen com, no citizens that wish to comment? Back to Glenn Gunn for final comment. If anyone else has any comments, go first, and then Glenn has last comment.
Call the question.
Okay, so I'm gonna call that question. So before us now is the motion to table que, uh, item nineteen, which is this resolution to establish this committee. We're gonna table it one council meeting into November. Glenn is going to work and, uh, on, with the city manager and try and come up with a charter. Um, you know, we appreciate that assistance. Come up with the best you can with the charter. I, I think everybody's put their information in terms of the charter, so I think he has a pretty good idea here of what we're looking for. Anybody else have anything to add to that question? Madam Clerk, would you please call? So if you vote for this, we will not be doing nineteen, and then item twenty is going to go away because we're not gonna be appointing anyone tonight to a committee that hasn't been established, so...
Council?
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Swob?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
I think that was an aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Broke it up.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So the motion, uh, to table passes seven to zero. So item nineteen is tabled for one council session. Glenn Gunn will proceed to work with the city manager. Um, if he, and not to give you any deadline or anything, but if you have any information for the work session that's coming up mid-month, certainly feel free to, uh, bring it to our attention, but not to put a, a deadline on you. Item twenty then, um, because we don't have a committee, I don't believe we could appoint people to a committee that we don't have. So I think item twenty goes away. Does every, is everyone, everyone in consensus on that? Yes?
Yeah, that's...
No one disagrees, right? Okay. So then we go item twenty-one, the authorization to execute a revised agreement with the city attorney. It's the approval of a revised agreement with city attorney Fred Riley. Do I have a motion first?
So moved.
Rita Swob, motions? Second. Second, Dave Gaddis. To Rita Swob?
Okay, actually, my question is for, uh, city attorney Fred Riley. Now, the revision here, mainly the number three that we were all questioning to begin with, that, I just wanna make sure I'm reading it and I'm very clear on the meaning of it. That eliminates any city council member to contact you directly, correct? It just means we all have to advise you on what, how we want you to move on something?
No. Each of the city council members should be able to contact their attorney, and occasionally their attorney, your attorney may contact you. But, but as far as giving direction, it needs to be consistent with the city code provision, which is how I modified the agreement.
Okay, but I'm confused because that was one of the reasons why the attorney bills were so high, was because you were being contacted. So now we're opening it up to everybody can contact you? I, I'm disagreeing.
Any, any attorney-client relationship, the client who is the seven of you should be able to contact me if there's a reason for you to do that. Most of the time, over the course of last year, um, there have been very few times that I've been contacted. For the most part, in the, in the previous contract, the, the mayor contacted me, um, numerous times, and that was authorized in the previous agreement.
Mr. Riley, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with councilmember Swob on this one. I'm not sure who's supposed to contact you now. I, I thought that this would have to be through acclamation now of the city council, which I was going to say is, you know, I know that's what we've discussed. I find it to be terribly inefficient. Um, but I, you know, it's, it's, now I'm hearing that we can contact you, so I gotta say I'm confused, too.
You'll, you'll make...
You're next.
You'll make things very difficult. The, the contract as it's written is consistent with the code provision, and it's consistent with the Florida bar rule. If one of the council members calls me, um, a week from now, assuming this is enacted, and wants to ask me a question or raise a confidential in, or, you know, raise a confidential matter with me related to the city, um, I think it's appropriate for them to be able to do that.
Glenn Gunn?
Are we confusing the, the ability to reach out and contact the city attorney versus a request for legal services? In other words, you see, I, I think that's, that's the confusion here. Nothing prevents anybody from picking up the phone and calling Fred to ask a, a question or a concern, but the only way that he, he can be tasked with legal services and billable hours, I mean, step in here, Fred. This is kinda what I'm thinking, is the only persons who can, the only people who can request legal services from you are the city manager or the council body itself. I'll make, make two points. One, there are numerous things over the course of every month that I spend time on that are related to city business that I don't charge for at all, and there's plenty of those you never even see on the bill. So, you know, I, I'm just telling you flat out, that's the way things have been. I've done them over the, the time that I've been here. If, if a city council member calls me and asks or tells me something, um, then that should be acceptable. If a city council member calls me and directs me to do something, then I am going to say, wait, you don't have the authority to direct me to do something, and that should be something that is discussed by the city council, or you discuss it with the city manager, and the city manager or the council should be the one directing me to take some action. So that's the distinction. I agree.
Mr. Riley, and, and no one's asking you to, and I know you graciously, um, you know, not billed us on many, many a call, um, as a city, and that's tremendous for, you know, tremendous that you've done that. But certainly, we're not asking you to do that. But the minute somebody calls you, I wanna make sure I'm straight with this, technically, the meter is running, okay? So somebody's incurring, the minute someone has a question for you, if they call you, you have the right to bill for that. Whether you choose to do so, that's your, solely your decision, okay? But I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm kinda torn, because the minute you pick up the phone, if someone, anyone picks up the phone and calls you, they've now incurred legal services for the city costs. Marv, you're next, after Fred Riley answers.
Well, you know, I, I, again, any attorney, I've, I've been in the attorney thirty-four years, and it is imperative that the attorney be able to communicate with the, the client. And if I, if I receive a call, then I will decide whether, uh, to charge for it or not. And in the past, that's what I've done, and I'm just telling you flat out, there's plenty of times I have not charged for it. And I'm not talking two or three minutes. There are plenty of times where it's been an hour that I've not charged for, or over the course of a month.
of a month, several hours that I haven't charged for. And there's several times, and, you know, I know everybody has, has a professional level job on this council, I mean, there's times I do things, and the time I spend is substantially longer than what I bill you for, because sometimes, despite me trying to be efficient, it is, for whatever reason, hard to find what you're looking for, although you know it exists. And that happens frequently, too, and I take that into account. I frequently put in a note that the actual time I spent was, you know, 3.5 hours, but I bill for two. So that's another thing that I think if you looked at the bills, you would have seen that quite a few times over the course of the last year plus.
I think, Marv, did you want to go next? Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I think what we're trying to do here is establish a level of seriousness. If it's serious enough that we bring him a question that should go to the city manager first, he's going to take it upon himself to do that. And then the city manager and him will discuss where it's going, and we'll get an answer back, we can't go any further, or it has to go to a work session or something in that regard. That's what I think we're trying to establish here, and I think by doing this, that's what it'll be. That's what I understand.
Robin Aki?
I agree with Marv. I think Fred is gracious enough with his time and his common sense to direct us. I think that this is probably not to direct Fred in how he is dealing with the city, it's almost as if it's to direct us how we're dealing with the attorney, as in, he's not our referee, he's not our, oh yeah, well, let me go tell Fred that this happened to see what he can do. I mean, he's not, we're not going to mommy or daddy to tattletale and cause a problem or a punishment. We need to maybe control ourselves and not use Fred as an easy middle person, and use common sense, and use Lynn, and if it's something that needs to be discussed, wait till a work session. So I think Fred is perfectly professional and gracious enough to monitor himself, and I think that this looks fine to me.
Jody Shirley?
Yeah, I kind of, just to tail end on to that, I think that, you know, normally when I have a question, a concern, my first call is to Lynn. I mean, I don't think I've ever had to reach out to Fred Riley for anything where I would make that call first. So generally, my first call is to Lynn, but I don't want to take away the opportunity that if I keep talking to Fred Riley, that I need to be able to do that. So the last meeting when this came up, Fred asked us to give him an opportunity to rewrite the contract, and I've read through it, and I'm pretty satisfied with the way he's redrafted it. I think it clarifies it, but doesn't restrict us, and I think it's up to us to police ourselves and how much we call him and use the services. You know, we're all adults, and I think it's pretty clear that we just need to be cautious in spending taxpayers' dollars on legal fees. Thank you, Fred. I think it's a good draft.
Thank you. Dave Gaddis?
I agree. I think at the end of the day, publicly posting Fred's bill and showing particulars of who it is that's running up the bill is about all we can do. At the end of the day, it's the taxpayer, the citizen, who has to make the decision as to whether the attorney is being abused or not. The purpose of this bill was, or not this bill, but this rewrite of the contract was basically to send a clear message that this council will not abuse the privilege of having direct contact with the city attorney. And I think basically, all we can do, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Riley, all we can do is make a change and hope for the best. So I'm for moving forward on this, and let's see what happens.
Anyone else on council? Mr. Riley?
I wanted to respond to what Mr. Gaddis, the councilmember Gaddis just said. Moving forward, I will, you know, look the seven of you in the eye, except Rita's not on camera, and tell you if something comes up and I'm contacted, depending on what it is, and I know what I have in mind, but I, to maintain confidences, I'm not going to say anything further, but any lawyer that is contacted, like them, I need to be able to hear from my client, and if they're, the look you in the eye part is, if it's something that the council should direct me to do, or the city manager will, should direct me to do, one of those two things, I will not take action and do much of anything until I get direction from one of those two bodies, which is what it calls for in the charter. So, you know, be forewarned, that's what will happen, and I don't have an unwillingness to say no. I'm actually good at saying no, but there needs to be a channel of communication so that the clients can contact me, and again, the thing I will do is stop if it's something that really should be a council decision. And there's a lot of things that really should be. I mean, in the time that I've done this, that is frequently one of the things that, you know, it's hard for an elected official to hear it, but that's what the attorney should be telling them. You can't direct me to do this, or you shouldn't direct me to do this. The council as a whole should direct me to do it, or you should discuss it with the city manager.
Anyone else? Are there any citizen comments?
None. Oh, wait a minute, I do have one. It looks like Leslie is here. Hold on one second. Okay, Leslie, if you would unmute, please.
Okay, are we good now?
Yes.
This is sort of a follow-on to what Fred just spoke about.
Hang on, hang on, Leslie, I know who you are, but the record doesn't know who you are, name and address.
Leslie Notaro, 2300 Gulf Boulevard. This is sort of a follow-on to what Fred talked about, like, who is his client? At what point does attorney-client privilege kick in? If an individual council member calls him, is that individual council member his client? Or is the city his client? And who speaks on behalf of the city as his client? I think that's something that needs to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
The answer to that is the collegio body, which is the seven people who comprise the city council, is the client.
Any other citizen comments?
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Yes.
Going back on what Fred said, yes, if the council is your client, if an individual council member calls you or contacts you, does that count? As the council as your client, or the city as your client? Just something to consider.
And that's why I included in the revised contract, the rule, which is 4-1.13, I believe is the citation, that addresses that issue.
Any other citizen comments before we close? Citizen comments?
I have none.
None, come back to council with the last word going to Rita Swope, but any other council comments first? I'll move to Rita Swope.
I don't have any other comments. Go ahead, call the question.
I will do that. So this is an authorization to execute a revised agreement with the city attorney. It's to approve the revised agreement, which we have in our packet, and it's been posted on the website for everyone else to see, with city attorney Fred Riley. A yes vote will adopt that contract in place of his old contract effective today. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Aki?
I think she's muted.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
Patty?
Yes. Can you hear me?
She's a 595 number. She muted, or did you mute her today?
I don't see a 595 number.
Right at the top.
727-595-46.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, she's just muted on her own.
No, I, can you, Lynn? Can you hear me? Aye.
You muted yourself.
No, I didn't. I'm not muted. Here's my mute.
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear them.
Turn it off. Okay, now, talk.
Can you hear me now? It's not my phone. I didn't touch my phone.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
What is it?
You are unmuted.
There you go. She's opened up now. Okay, Madam Clerk, we had asked for the, to call the question here. The authorization to execute a revised agreement with city attorney Fred Riley. It's item number 21, a yes vote gives us that new agreement. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
So it passes five to two, the contract is revised, and Mr. Riley, if you'll execute that, we will get the proper signatures here at headquarters, and that is effective immediately.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to item 22. This is an authorization to award bid B-20-02 Drainage Improvements for Harbor Drive, 7th and 8th Streets. This is to accept Steve's Excavating and Paving Inc. proposal, $305,604.48. The funding is, has been obtained from the FY '19 through '20 capital budget rollover. Do we have a motion first?
No, ma'am.
Rita Swope, Marv Beam. Rita Swope?
I'll defer to the city manager.
Lynn Reeves?
Mayor and Council, this is to award the bid for the drainage project on 7th and 8th Street. We'll be putting in a new outfall, some new piping along Harbor Drive, and replacing the inlets with the new graded inlets, which will reduce some of the infiltration into the pipes that sometimes clog it. And there will be some minor curb replacement and resurfacing on Harbor. 7th and 8th Streets was resurfaced in probably the last six or seven years, and so we're not going to resurface the whole street, but we will do some curb replacement as needed. So I'm asking for your approval.
Lynn, two things, well, one question is that I saw county people down there today. It looked like they were bringing some heavy-duty equipment down there. Are they continuing with that project down at the end of the block with the, is that still that sewage project?
They're doing something else. The sewage project ceased in, or finished in July. So this is something else that they're doing with the pumps, because as you and I both know, the pump trucks were still there.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
Even after they did the project, so they're aware of our project, I've notified them of it, and so our project probably won't start, probably for, by the time we get the contract signed and everything, it'll probably be somewhere between three and four weeks. So what they're doing, they said they'll be finished in the next month.
Lynn, I'm not sure you have, if you have this on 8th Street. We definitely have it on 7th. The road was repaved just a few years ago, and during Hurricane Irma, the contractor came and unfortunately used the wrong equipment to remove debris, and gouged up the front part of that road, particularly as it goes by Gulf Boulevard. It's actually a danger. I mean, if you're walking along the road and there are no sidewalks on it, you can easily step in it and twist your ankle. I know I've talked with you a few times about doing it, we've tried, we were hoping that maybe it would come with the county when they dug things up over there. Is there any way we can get this thing fixed? That road's going to get destroyed, those things are just going to keep opening up, and we can fix it and save it now, and probably save us a lot of money down the road with a very minor repair.
Yeah, I can ask. We've got some contingency money in this contract, so that's, we've got some money we can adjust.
And you know the area I'm talking about, right? Right by the corner, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a small area, but it's a dangerous area, okay?
Yeah, it's, all that would take is milling and resurfacing.
Great, and I think you'll save the whole road if you do that, and you won't, you know, the rest of the road is in great shape, so. I'm all for this, obviously, it's a, we've talked about this for a while, so. Anyone else? Any citizen comments? I'm seeing none. Dave, did you see any?
There's none.
He's shaking his head no. So, okay, so we come back to the council, and we'll end with Rita Swope. No comments, Rita?
I'm good. Call for the question.
Will do. Authorization to award, this is item 22, authorization to award B, bid B-20-02 Drainage Improvements for Harbor Drive, 7th and 8th Streets. This is the acceptance of Steve's Excavating and Paving Proposal, $305,604.48. Funding from the FY '19 through '20 capital budget rollover, this isn't part of the proposal, but Lynn, find some asphalt there and fix those problems on the front of 7th Street if you could, okay? That would be, that would be great if we could work it in here. A yes vote approves this. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley? Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye.
So it passes seven to zero. Lynn, please proceed with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 23, authorize bid, authorize award of bid B-20-01 Beach Walkover Restoration Project. This is to award the bid to Evelyn Brothers, Inc., $108,009, funding in the FY '20 through '21 capital budget. Do we have a motion?
No.
Marv Beam, I think, was first, and I think it was Jody?
Yeah.
Okay, Marv, Lynn Reeves?
Mayor and Council, this is to replace the beach walkovers at the beach accesses. Over the years, they've, what I would consider, they've been, they're buried in sand, so we'll pull all that stuff out and replace it. The good thing about this project is the county's sharing in the cost, $50,000, and we've already, the FDEP permitted stuff is already taken care of, so just ask for you to approve us the award of this.
I think we've been talking about this for some time now, Lynn, right? This has been in the works, and now this is finally coming to fruition here, correct?
Right.
Okay. Any council comments? Citizen comments? None. Back to council, ending with Marv.
Glad to see you're done. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call the question. This is to authorize the bid of B-20-01 Beach Walkover Restoration Project. We're going to award a bid to Evelyn Brothers, Inc., $108,009, funding in the FY '20 through '21 capital budget, but a yes vote allows this to proceed. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero. City manager, you're authorized to award that bid to the Evelyn Brothers and move forward with that project. Thank you.
Item 24, consideration of resolution. Item twenty-four, consideration of resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, to adopt a public records policy, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for adoption of a public records policy, providing for the repeal of all resolutions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. This is the revision of use of city email by elected official, city staff, employees, boards, and committee members and custodial costs. Um, do we have a motion first? Jody Shirley motions.
Second.
Second, Dave Gaddis, Jody Shirley.
Uh, I think it's self-explanatory. I think it's, um, it's just recapping what we discussed in the past.
Any other council comments? Yes, Glenn Gunn.
Uh, I'm looking at, uh, paragraph four point three, and I just want some clarification. It talks about failure to comply with this policy shall place public records custodial responsibilities on, it talks about, it, the same verbiage is used for elected officials and staff as well as, uh, board and committee members. Is it inferred that custodial responsibilities includes cost?
No, it does not. The, uh, Florida statutes, which is in chapter one nineteen, uh, sets forth costs and the policy, uh, mirrors what's in the Florida statutes. And the, the clarifications that, that I made to that section were to make it clear that, which is consistent with Florida law, that whoever is the custodian of the record is the one that is responsible for them. And it, it's a very simple, uh, solution if somebody's going to not use their, the, a city, uh, issued email address, which the clerk would have, uh, access to. If it's an email address on a private server and the, uh, individual does not copy the clerk, then they are the sole custodian of the record and their obligation under Florida law is to provide a public record that is requested.
No, I, I understand that portion of it. My question, and, and it's, it kind of, uh, underscores what we're trying to accomplish here, is plugging the hole, who bears the cost of those custodial responsibilities? In other words, if that person chooses to use his own email, uh, keep the record however he wants, but is called upon to retrieve that record, who bears the cost? Is that a reimbursable expense? Or does the person who, who has those custodial responsibilities, do they bear the cost themselves?
Well, the, the obligation is on the person that is the custodian of the records. And I'll, I'll go down two different tracks. One track is they copy the city clerk. In, in that situation, the city clerk is, it has custody of the records and they, uh, the city clerk can provide them to whoever requests them. The other one is the, the individual uses a private server and does not copy the city clerk. Under Florida law and this policy, they have the obligation as the custodian of the record to provide the record. In that situation, if they refuse to provide the record, then the thing that, that would be done is either the city clerk or I would, uh, continually ask that they comply with Florida law and provide the record. If they steadfastly refuse to do so and it ended up going to court, what I would do in a courtroom is show the judge the evidence that shows what efforts I made and what efforts the city clerk made to get the records on behalf of the city. And that would inevitably lead or include the person that has, is the custodian of the records, they would have to answer for themselves in, if they, uh, refuse to provide the records. And I, I don't know how I can do it any other way. The, the thing that is important is in order to charge fees of any sort or costs of any sort, you have to have a basis in the statute to do that.
I'm not, I guess I'm confused because I'm not sure I got an answer out of that. I understand who's responsible for producing the record. And I understand what, what avenues you have for getting that record. My question is, is if the individual produces the record and says, oh, by the way, it cost me this to find the record, reproduce it, and give you a copy of it, is that a reimbursable expense? Or does the person who has the custodial responsibilities responsible for bearing the cost for retrieving that record and providing it to the person who's requesting the public record?
Okay, Fred, I'm going to have to step in and, and, um...
No, I want to hear this from our city.
Mr. Gunn, do not interrupt me.
I think I was.
Do not interrupt what I'm speaking, Mr. Gunn. You're out of order. You are discussing a threatened litigation right now. There is a lawsuit that is closing. He cannot give you that answer.
I'm warning this.
He cannot answer.
Sir, presiding officer, I am asking a question to our city attorney.
First off, you're not going to ask a question to our city attorney. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Riley, I will permit you to ask this, but I will remind you that we received a notice of lawsuit on this exact issue. If you wish to opine, be my guest.
City attorney, my question goes to paragraph four point three of this agenda item. The question is, it, the verbiage talks about custodial responsibilities. And my initial question was, does custodial responsibilities infer that the person with the custodial responsibilities bears the cost? Or do you need specific language in that guideline to differentiate between who has the responsibility and who bears the cost?
Well, I'm going to answer the question, but I'm going to answer the question by making a couple of points. I mean, the, the first one is, you're asking me a hypothetical, which is fine. Um, you, you did not ask me a question about a specific case. Okay? I'm making that perfectly.
That's correct.
Okay? Um, the, the answer that I'm going to give is a generic answer. The cost, the reasonable cost, if there are reasonable costs incurred, then the reasonable cost should be charged. That's consistent with Florida law. And there's a whole, uh, section that addresses what are the reasonable costs. So, so that's my answer.
Dave Gaddis's hand is up.
Uh, uh, my question is, is to whom is responsible for those costs? That's the part that's not clearly defined. Is it the city's responsibility to pay the person that, that, uh, had to dig up the records? Or is it the person's responsibility to charge the requester directly? Because that's where the confusion is, and, and I think it probably needs to be included in this document.
Well, again, I'm going to say the same answer. It, it's the reasonable costs that are authorized in the statute can be charged regardless of who the custodian is, whether it's the city clerk or somebody else. Whatever the reasonable costs, statutory reasonable cost, uh, should be, is, is what is being addressed.
Mr. Riley, I have a question, I have two questions for you. Actually, it's a three-part question. Have you reviewed this four point three?
I wrote it.
Yeah, you wrote it. Okay, good. So you wrote it, um, and I assume, well, I'm not going to assume, I'm going to have you tell me. Uh, it's compliant with the federal constitution?
Um, I would say it is.
And the state constitution?
I would say it is.
And all federal and state statutes?
I would say it is.
Okay. I respectfully disagree. And I'm going to leave it at that. Um, I don't believe you can make these, this obligation on an elected official. Uh, so, we can professionally disagree. Um, I, I don't think you can constitutionally impose any requirement. And the problem, the word I have a problem with as a lawyer is "shall." You could say "should," you could say "it's suggested."
Point of order.
And you can, and you can do that with any...
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
Um, you're talking as an attorney rather than the mayor of the city.
No, I'm speaking with my expertise, Ms. Swope, just like you are a Realtor. And I will use my expertise, just like you use your Realtor expertise. So I, yes, I am an attorney. I'm speaking now as an individual, as a mayor, who happens to hold, oh, a nice pretty law license and admission to three courts. Uh, well, actually more than that, but three states. So, Mr. Riley, I'm sorry. So that's not, that point is not well-founded, that point of order. So my question is, is I, I know for a fact that you can impose these restrictions on employees, but I don't believe you can do it on an elected official. That's where I have a problem with this. Any other comments or questions? Uh, Dave Gaddis.
I'd like to call the question.
Uh, you can't call the question before the council, before these citizens have had an opportunity to speak, but you can call it after that.
There are no citizens with their hands raised.
Well, I'll ask for that after we finish with council comments. Are there any other council comments? And now I just, now we'll move, uh, sorry, Jody Shirley.
We have one now.
Wait, hang on, we're still on council comments and it's Jody Shirley has the floor.
No, I was just saying there's a citizen that raised their hand.
Yes, I noticed that.
Sorry.
But is there any other council comments before we go to city, before the citizens? Now we go to citizens? I have Kim. Kim? Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Kim Shaw Elliott. I live on one-two-one Ninth Street here in Bel Air Beach. Um, the, uh, proposal for the policy seems to be very reasonable and consistent with common practices in that the city is making available to all city officials a secure system for communication of city business. And if an individual elects not to use that communication system, essentially this rule is saying you're on your own. If you choose not to use the one that's provided, then that individual is, is considered the custodian of the record and would have the obligation to produce those records and certainly at their own expense as I read this. So, um, I think it's a very fair and reasonable approach. Um, the security of communications is becoming a significant issue of late and is a significant risk for many, uh, organizations, and so, uh, this seems to be a reasonable approach.
Thank you. Uh, we're, we're on citizen comments. Any other citizens? There are none. Then we'll come back to council. I saw Glenn Gunn's hand up. Glenn. Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, we got a, we got a late citizen comment. We're going to go back to citizens.
All right, I have Peggy.
Peggy, please identify yourself and you have three minutes.
Peggy Gatliff, two-two-two-eight, Donato. And I agree with Kim, I'm sorry, but in this day and age, we should be used, if, if there's a city official, they should be using city email. I mean, with what we've just seen in the last couple of years in the, in the United States government, with people accidentally wiping their phones, accidentally wiping their hard drives, um, you know, there's a lot at stake here. So I, I think it's a perfectly reasonable request.
Okay, thank you. Any other, anyone else, citizens? I'm going to close citizen comments if I see no other hands. Okay? None? Okay, we'll move to Glenn Gunn, who's back to council.
Yeah, I agree with Kim and Peggy on this, but that, this, what I'm hearing from Fred Riley is not what I think they're hearing, and that is, yes, they, they have custodial responsibility, but from what I'm hearing from Fred Riley, it's not necessarily at their own expense. If they, they submit a reasonable cost to the city, they can bill the city for retrieving those public records. Is, is that what I'm hearing? I mean, that's, that's the crux of what my line of question is about. I, yes, they have custodial responsibility, but what I'm hearing from Fred Riley is that that individual with the custodial responsibility, if the reasonable, if the costs are reasonable, they can be reimbursed or submit a bill to the city.
Mr. Riley, you want to answer that?
I'll answer it in the, in the, very much the same manner I did before. There's a statute that addresses the cost, and the statute, regardless of who the custodian of the record is, it is a, the, the cost, the reasonable cost of producing the records can be charged to the person requesting the records. That's what the Florida law says. So whether it's the city clerk or another individual who has the custody of the public records, if there is a statutory basis for them to charge for those records, then they are authorized to do it.
So the person who requests the record makes the public records request for the city? Who's on the hook for, for the bill?
Well, I'm going to use the, the, um, most extreme example I can come up with. If a citizen wrote an email to the city clerk and said, I'd like all the records for the seven council members for the last five years, all their emails, the first thing that Patty would do in responding under this policy would be to give them some projection as to what the cost would be for those records. And I'm just going to pick a number. That, that amounts to thirty thousand emails. And Patty would figure out the, uh, you know, make a cost projection on what it would take to go through and review and redact thirty thousand emails. And then once that projection is made, it's provided to the person that has requested the emails. And that, that is authorized under Florida law. And if the person then decides that they want the thirty thousand emails, then they can provide a deposit and the records would be produced. And before they're, the records are released to them, then they would have to pay for whatever the remainder of the cost will. That's what the statute allows. So it doesn't matter whether it's the city clerk or another individual. That, that's a good example.
Any other council comments before I end with Jody Shirley? Yes, Marv, go ahead, Marv Bean and Jody. Jody, you're last, so Marv, Marv's next. Go ahead, Marv.
It's hard to ask, and if I'm wrong, shut me down, all right? You've got, one person asks another person to ask another person to get the emails. Is it the original requester that pays the bill?
Well, under Florida law, the person that requests the records, uh, doesn't even have to be identified. So somehow the person requests records and then, under Florida law, the city clerk and anybody else who's a custodian of the records is, if it's a city or if it's a public record, they're obligated to provide it to the citizen. So the, the chain of, chain of direction, I, I'm not going to comment on that at all. It doesn't, it's irrelevant. If someone asks for a public record and indeed the document is a public record, then under Florida law, you're obligated to provide the public record to them. That, that's the heart and soul of chapter one nineteen.
But if the Requester is a third person down the chain?
Matter.
Is that, is that the person that has to pay?
The person that requests the records, whoever that may be.
Okay. You got, I've got my answer. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think you're, you're missing the point there is because a public records request comes into the city, the city clerk makes the request to the staff member... comes into the city, the city clerk makes the request to the staff member or the public official, ergo, so who's making the, the public records request? The clerk or the individual? So, who's on the hook for reimbursement and paying the bill for reasonable expenses?
The person that requested the, the, uh, record.
And that person's anonymous?
Whether it's a city clerk, the city clerk is a custodian or anybody else, it doesn't make any difference. The person that requests the records, if there are costs that, that statute provides for them to pay, then they're obligated to pay it before they get the record.
Okay, so.
Can I, can I say, I think that the, uh, we're going down this, um, bunny trail where the purpose of this 4.3 is to ensure that we all use our city emails and if we choose not to, that we copy the clerk. And it's no longer our responsibility, except maybe to go through the emails and potentially redact things that might necessarily need to be redacted. But other than that, it's not our responsibility. So, it's not going to be time consuming for any of the council members or the staff to go through their emails because we followed the procedure that Fred drew up here and the, who gets reimbursed and so forth and who, and who pays the bill is handled if this guideline is followed. So, I, this is the process in trying to get us cleaned up so that that's no longer an issue. You disagree, Glenn?
Yeah, I'm not going to have all the cross talking, hang on, hang on. Marv Beam's hand is up and then we'll go back to Glenn for his third time on this go around. Go ahead, Marv.
The only thing I, I can see here is we, we've actually seen by discussion who needs to pay who. It's clarified. Whether it's in the past or the future, whether we're wrong or we're right, whether we control emails or not, we've just discovered who ever asked for the emails and whoever has to give the answer needs to be paid by the person requesting. Bottom line.
Well, the, this policy.
Go ahead.
I'm, didn't want to, I'm sorry, it didn't mean that.
No, no, no. Let me just, I just want to acknowledge Robin, we have, I have Fred Riley, then Glenn Gunn, then Robin Aki, okay?
Well, I'll just respond to, to Marv's point. Um, if you enact, and now through this policy, this policy only perspective, it's going forward, it does not deal with anything that has happened prior to now. So, that's one, to me, very important clarification.
Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we understand this is future, we're trying to plug gaps here. So, in the hypothetical, Glenn Gunn at a future date chooses not to use his city email address and I use a private email address, okay? So, I use my private email address for city business. An anonymous public records request comes into the city clerk saying, I want to see Glenn Gunn's public records regarding city business for the last month or so. This policy says I'm responsible for the, I have those custodial responsibilities for those private, those emails that I keep on my private email address. So, I go ahead and retrieve those records to make them available for the public records request. My question is, if I bill for my reasonable cost for retrieving those records, who do I bill? Do I bill the city clerk who contacted me saying there's a request for your public records or do, or do I bill some anonymous email address and request your fine public records?
You, you don't bill the, you, you provide the city clerk with the costs that you incurred that I am hopeful are consistent with the Florida statute. And if they're reasonable costs, assuming they're reasonable costs and they're consistent with the Florida statute, then the clerk would, uh, advise the person that's made the request that, that they're obligated to pay.
Okay. I'm all board now.
Robin Aki.
Thirty minutes to get there, but I understand.
Third time was the charm, Robin. Robin, you're muted, you have to unmute yourself.
I don't understand what's so difficult, I caught on right away. I mean, the person requesting gets, they're anonymous, let's face it, nothing's anonymous these days. They send it from an email address, they can get an email back. They want it, they pay the deposit. They want all of them, they pay the rest of it, done. I don't understand, he wrote it very well, I'm happy with it. Call the question if it's the appropriate time, I don't know when, but let's move on.
I'm going to go back through Jody Shirley because it's her motion. Jody, you have the last word, but, um, I'm going to reiterate, this is, um, I believe unconstitutional, you cannot force an elected official to, you cannot tell someone whom they must copy emails on. You're going down that 1983 road again, folks, don't go there, that's my vote.
I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay.
I, I'm going to say, I, this is one of these times, I, I went over this again and again to try and find a way to make it consistent with the Florida statute. And I, I will be the first to admit, this, like a lot of things, is not perfect. But Florida statutes aren't perfect either, there's, there's, there's some holes in it, um, in Chapter 119, and I'm aware of that. The people that I talk to that are, uh, far more expert in this field of law than I am agree that there's holes in it. This is the best I can do to make it consistent with the Florida statutes.
We'll, we'll respectfully disagree. You, you can't mandate someone's communications, Mr. Riley, that's my position. We'll finish up with Jody Shirley unless anyone else has anything.
Respectfully disagree with you.
I think I'll just, uh, recap in that as long as you follow the procedure and copy the clerk, you'll never get to get stuck in that position of how to, how to, who gets re, who gets reimbursed and when and why and all those, those, uh, questions that came up. So, I would say, I think Dave's got his hand up again.
No, you're, we're.
I want to go after Dave.
Well, if, if, if we're, if we're going to have another round, that's fine, I'll keep going. Uh, Jody gets the last word, so go ahead, Dave, if you want to speak afterwards. Jody, are you finished?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Dave, go ahead, we'll go around again.
I'd like to call the question.
No, no, that's, I was going to call the question, Jody had the last word and, and, but if you want to call the question, we have to do a vote on it. So, she had the last word. Okay, I will call this question. Consideration, this is item 24, consideration of item 2020-16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, to adopt the public records policy providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for adoption of a public records policy, providing for the repeal of all resolutions in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Revision, then, the description is revision of the use of city email by elected officials, city staff and employees, boards and committee members and custodial costs. A yes vote will pass that policy, uh, as amended and as red, well, that red line is underlined in 4.3. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Nay, so it passes six to one, this is now policy, we'll revise it and we'll get it into the policy books. Moving on to item 25, consideration of Resolution 2020-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 9th, 2021 for the purpose of electing three city council members for three, three-year terms to establish the qualifying date for persons seeking elective office for the 2021 municipal election and establishing an effective date. This is to set election qualifying period, that's the description. So, first a motion.
So, wait.
I think we had a tie there, I'm going to go with Jody Shirley, Rita Swope. Jody, we'll go to you first?
Um, you know, it's just procedure, we've got an upcoming election and three of us council members are up for being replaced or what have you, so I would say, uh, that's it.
Anyone else? Any citizen comments?
There are none.
Coming back to council and we will end with Jody Shirley. Jody, any last words?
No, nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll call the question, it is item 25, consideration of Resolution 2020-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, calling for a general election to be held on March 9th, 2021 for the purpose of electing three, three city council members for three, three-year terms, um, to establish the qualifying date for persons seeking elective office for the 2021 municipal election and establishing an effective date. We will set the election qualification period. A yes vote passes that resolution, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero, um, I, I guess this goes to our city clerk for, uh, for, um, processing now since she's, I believe, our elected official, our election, um, official, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll give that over to you. Okay, we're fin, we're finished, um, with the, uh, regular agenda. And now we move on to the regular business. Uh, what we have left is the unfinished business, item number 26, is there any unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move on to the city attorney's report.
I have no report this evening.
Um, Mr. Riley, I have one question for you, I'm not going to ask it with the person, but, um, I brought this person up, I sent you something this week, just an email that I received from the city. We have an individual in the city, I referenced, um, this person in the last council meeting, calling up City Hall, making defamatory, not defamatory remarks, um, ethnic uslers, and it's continuing, and now it's escalated to the point, that's why I sent it to Mr. Riley, that she's now hired not one, but supposedly two attorneys. So, I wanted to alert the council to this individual, she claims that people are breaking into her backyard, I don't know if it's, I don't know, one minute she talks about the police, one minute she talks about our city people, and then she's talking about the Italian people. So, I don't know who, what's going on here, but, Mr. Riley, because litigation was threatened, I wanted to give it to you and see what our next step should be. These are getting more and more, I, I don't say hate speech filled, um, so, I, I haven't reported it yet to the sheriff, but it, it's getting there. So, I'll defer to you and your wisdom on this.
Um, I don't know how much wisdom I had, I listened to the recordings that you forwarded to me, um, it's something I intended to talk to, to Lynn about. Um, the person in one of the recordings references their attorney, I, I can easily, uh, call their attorney and ask the attorney, what's the problem with your, uh, client? That's fine, I'm happy to do that. Um, I would hope that would be an exceptionally short call. Um, but, you know, ha, half of the stuff she was talking about, um, I, I was unclear of what she was even reporting to.
Mayor and council, we, we've referred her to the sheriff's office already because she calls, she'll call Patty, she calls Laura, she calls me, she emails me, she email, calls the mayor, she wants to call everybody. It, it's just a situation, the sheriff has been over there and they've referred her to the, uh, uh, mental health unit and they're, they're going to hopefully deal with it eventually.
But Lynn, are you saying that basically, I mean, I, I don't, you know, again, as a consensus, as a council consensus, do we want to have Mr. Ri, I mean, she did, she did make threats about lawsuits and stuff, but she wasn't specific. Do we want to just let this pass at this point and leave it in, you know, we'll send them anything else we get?
Yeah, I, I, I think at this point, this is recurring, it, you know, it, it goes in, uh, cycles. It'll happen for a couple of months, then she'll go away. I mean, she used to complain about a deputy we had here, so it, it's just the, the person in the situation.
Jody, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think that, uh, it's clear that there's some mental health issues, don't know if there's family nearby, maybe a call from Fred to her attorney if we, if this gentleman is actually her attorney, just to say, you know, there's ongoing harassment, is it possible that there's family members you can get involved? You know, I, you know, I don't know who, I don't know who can figure that out, but it would make sense if an attorney has maybe some, some contact with her family, that might be a good solution to get someone else involved.
I have Robin's hand and Fred, go ahead, after, so Robin first.
From a medical standpoint, my only concern is, is she a harm to herself? Is she a harm to individuals? Does she have any suicidal or homicidal ideations? That's something I think the sheriff needs to look into for a public safety perspective. I don't want you to just, you know, push it away like, oh, she does this in cycles, it's just part of the process. Because that can get out of hand and that's how these things start, so I'm just thinking, you know, safety.
Yeah, the sheriff is totally aware of it and they, they may, make contact. Unfortunately, she doesn't, when they do make contact, she won't come out of her house and they, it hasn't got to the point that Robin's speaking about welfare and stuff, so, but they are totally aware of it and it's been an ongoing situation off and on for several years.
I have Fred next and then Marv Beam.
Well, I, I just was going to say that, that, you know, I, I wanted to talk to Lynn about the background of it, but now I'm hearing what the background is. The best thing for me to do is to, uh, not call the attorney, I will send him an email so that I've copied Lynn and Patty on it and ask if there's an issue that we need to address on behalf of the City of Bel Air Beach and see what the guy responds with. And that way, you have a paper trail showing that we've done the most responsible thing that could be done.
Yeah, that's good, Marv?
That's what I was going to say, it's an ongoing thing, it's been at least five years that I know of. Um, and, uh, Fred, you're on the right path, I mean, there's still a paper trail that we've done what we can do to resolve the issue in a, in a decent manner and call it a day.
But to Robin's point, and, and I think it's a valid one, you know, these things can turn sometimes very, very quickly and it has been, you know, ongoing, apparently, I, I thought I was the only one getting the phone calls, but it looks like everyone at City Hall is getting those phone calls. And they're pretty nasty, so, um, you know, not really getting to the point of threats yet, but, uh, you know, I could see it getting that way, so, yeah, let's keep an eye on this thing and we'll just keep communicating. So, I think we're all in agreement that Fred's, um, idea is, is the way to go? Yes? Yes, I think so, okay, Fred? Anybody else had anything for the city attorney? We move on to the city manager.
Yeah, quickly, uh, the, the, uh, work session, uh, on the third Monday, uh, the items I have on there right now, discussion of the Marina fees, Fred's going to make a presentation about the sign ordinance, uh, striping of the city streets, that was requested by council member Beam, the communications committee to review that report and, uh, look at how we're going to move forward with, uh, the survey that they recommended, uh, the additional policing and, uh, the turn lane on Gulf Boulevard, if we get some information back from, uh, Whit and his group. In your packet, you got the code enforcement report, don't forget that the sheriffs don't deliver anything anymore, uh, effective October 1st. Uh, their, the mailbox, I don't know how many of you have tried it out, but it's, it's here at City Hall and we'll put all your mail in it. Uh, and next week, I am going to be on vacation and Kyle will be in charge.
Enjoy. Lynn, um, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but we're putting stuff in that box for you, like the, you know, the extra bags and the binders and things that are being.
Patty's, Patty's picking those out.
Okay, good, so that's what we'll continue to do then?
Yeah.
Did you have anything else, Lynn?
Nope, that's it.
I have two questions for you. Um, one is, we have a garage sale, but our cities, our citizen, our city council didn't authorize the garage sale or a citywide yard sale, so, um, I wasn't sure we were going back to events again, so, I'm not against it, but I, I just want to make sure that, again, we're doing everything according to the rules here, so, I don't believe we ever authorized to go back to these activities.
Well, this is the standard annual garage sale, and I've never brought that to city council, and I don't think anyone has over the years. It's, we do one in the fall, and we do one in the spring. And we've decided as a group to alternate the parking.
Are we going to go back to doing the city events now? If we're opening this up, are we going to be opening up city events?
That'll really be up to the park board if they want to do anything. At this point, I, you know, the garage sales, those are, a lot of individuals have asked about it, and it's an annual garage sale. It's been done for years.
Well, we're in the middle of a pandemic, so council, it's not a formal motion, but I want consensus from us that that's what we want to do as a city. And if we don't want to do this as a city, then this needs to be put on hold until we can get it to a work session, because we're in a different time than we were last year. So where are we at, council? Robin's shaking her head. I'm not in favor of it either, so.
I mean, clearly, this is not a large gathering at City Hall. It's not city-sponsored, so I think it's a little different. You know, if I want to have a yard sale, I think I should have a yard sale, and I still have to go to the city to give me that approval. So I would be, and it's already been, it's already out there, so I think the date's set, and it's coming up here in the next couple of weeks, isn't it?
November 7th.
November 7th, okay. But, so I would, you know, I think we just let it go. I don't think it should be, I don't think we should change it at this point.
Dave Gaddis at Marv Beam?
Yeah, I don't see this as something that the city is sponsoring. Yes, we do set aside a date for it. However, I look at it as private citizens dealing with private citizens and what they do and privacy of their own homes is their business.
Marv Beam?
You know, I'll agree with that, private this and private that, but on the overhaul view, I think as a city, we should take the responsibility and not authorize it this year, or at least until next year.
Well, they can still do their private garage sale. They could do it individually.
You know, it's a possibility of passing something on from outside the city to a resident. I don't think it's worth it. I think it's too risky.
I'd like to speak as well.
I have Robin, hang on, I have Marv, then we go Robin, and, well, Robin, you spoke first, so I'm gonna go back to Rita and then to you, okay? So Rita first and then Robin, Aki.
So is Marv?
I'm sorry, Marv, were you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. Rita?
I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Shirley and Councilmember Gaddis. This is a private thing. It's not a city-sponsored event by any means, so I agree with both of them.
Robin Aki?
No, I agree it's private. It's not a city-sponsored event, but because it's advertised, more people show up, as opposed to I decide this Saturday to randomly have a garage sale and put out a sign, I may only get 20 people. But because this is a larger, many more garage sales around the area attracts more people, so I may have 50 to 100 people at my house. So there's just more chance of spreading. Who knows? People think, hey, it's outside. I don't need a mask. And, well, we all know that that's not how this works with the virus. So I say no. I understand it's private. You can still have your own private one any Saturday or Sunday you choose, but I don't think we should encourage large, larger crowds than normal. That's it.
I'm gonna have to chime in here and say that with the, it is city-sponsored, okay? The city organizes this. The city places signs around. The city polices it. The city goes out afterwards, picks those signs up. So we advertise it. So I do believe that we are, you know, in the extent of sponsoring it, we're sponsoring it, we're promoting it, we're helping organize it. So I guess, you know, I'd like to hear from Fred Riley. I see you back there, Fred. Legally, I mean, you know, I know people can sue for anything, but, you know, we're talking about, thinking about hosting a garage sale. What are we looking at over here?
Okay, I'm unmuted, correct?
Go ahead. Yes, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Well, if the city has an organizational role with it, then conceivably, somebody could make a claim. And it's, you know, I'm not going to tell you that won't happen. It's one of these things, you simply have to weigh the pros and cons and make the most sound decision you can. I mean, I'm extremely torn on stuff like this, because the easy answer is don't have it. And cancel it, and you know if you do it that way, there will be no liability, because without an event, there is no liability. But on the other side of the coin, you know, the whole country and state are trying to get back to some semblance of normalcy, and having a yard sale is doing that type of thing, and it's three weeks ago, or three weeks from now, or a month from now. So what kind of shape will be in a month from now is anybody's guess. I mean, over the course of, especially the last four months, it has been an absolute roller coaster. So I don't have a very good, you know, there's no real basis in law to tell you much of anything, other than if you have the event, there's the prospect of some liability if the city has a organizational role in it. That's the best observation I can make.
Glenn Gunn?
Are there any state restrictions or county restrictions right now?
No, no, actually, Bel Air Bluffs is having the garage sale the same weekend we always have it.
Okay, so let me extrapolate from there, and let's put the emphasis back on a little personal responsibility here. If you're concerned about strangers stepping on your property, then you don't have a garage sale. If you're concerned about mingling with other people, then you don't go to a garage sale. The flip side of this legal issue is, people are starting to sue for governmental overreach. That's the flip side of this coin here. There's no reason why we have to put up a roadblock or something like it. It would certainly behoove us to be responsible, and perhaps any involvement we have, we can have a waiver or a warning or a restriction. Hey, you know, be smart about this. If you're going to attend or do something like that, social distancing, personal hygiene, et cetera, et cetera. But that's just kind of my opinion on this whole thing. Thank you.
Marv Beam?
I would say pull a resolution together that states that the residents are on their own, as far as any health issues related to the pandemic. If you have a garage sale, you're totally responsible. It takes the city out of it.
Well, I have a solution. Let's just drop the garage sale. The people that have signed up, we'll tell them they can have their garage sale, because they can. And anybody that wants to have one on that day, they can have it. We just won't be involved in it. And, you know, our involvement mainly is trying to help control the parking on the street. Well,
We can still do that.
No, no, not if we're not gonna be involved in it. I don't, you know, I think we either don't get involved in it and just let the people that want to have them, that have signed up, there's very few, that want to have a garage sale, let them do it within the city's ordinance. And they have been doing that.
I'd like to speak.
Good.
I'm gonna agree with City Manager Lynn Reeves, that we just balance far as the city involvement, because just as Mayor Manzo said earlier, you know, it is getting to be too happy. I'm paraphrasing your comment, but, so we need to go ahead and just pull the city out of it and let everybody deal with their own. And it's probably gonna be the same thing with Halloween. People are gonna have to deal with it, whether they want to open their door to little kids or not, but I think we just pull the city out and let people that already signed up have it on their own.
That solves it.
Okay, well, let's get a consensus here. So basically, the city manager at this point is saying, we're just not going to formally be behind it. People can certainly participate on their own. We're not telling you to do it or not do it. We're just not involved. Are we all in agreement with that? Does anybody disagree? Everybody's thumbs up? A thumbs up? Rita?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody's good. So Lynn, we're kind of half in it.
Yeah.
But we're not in it officially. Okay, so to the next question, I think Glenn Gunn actually just brought up the thing that I was gonna ask you, it's the last thing that I have for you. In Michigan, there was actually just a Supreme Court ruling that said the governor can't have this unlimited state of emergency. We've had a state of emergency since March. Thank God, it doesn't look like you've had to use a lot of those emergency powers. And, I mean, the purpose of us doing this in the beginning was, as our stated purpose was because we really didn't know, you know, the health and welfare issues of COVID-19. They haven't gotten any better, okay? But I think when I look at the fact that we've had 26 people in our entire city that have been affected by this, the pandemic in terms of, you know, overrunning our city, getting to the point where you need to involve emergency powers and stuff like that, really hasn't come to pass. So I wanted to, this is why I wanted to put, by the way, on the agenda, and there was a little mix-up between Patty and I, and it didn't get on there. So I wanted to ask you, I have to consult with you, but I don't, the way I'm looking at it, I don't know that we need to keep this going in our city. It could be reinstituted in five minutes' time if you ever needed it, so.
Well, until the county and the state reduce it, I would leave it alone. We haven't had to do anything but buy a few supplies. And you've approved us going forward with that law enforcement grant, and I think for now, it's, it gives us, if something happened, it gives us an immediate opportunity. But we haven't used it, but I would leave it alone until the county revokes theirs.
Fred, let me defer to you on this one. If you're familiar with that case, again, they're at the court, and this is the first one, and it may not be precedential, it's certainly not precedential for Florida, but it is, you know, and there's no challenge in Florida, but I could see it coming, you know, these ongoing states of emergency. And, you know, I think we have consensus that we really, again, thank God, we haven't really had to use those emergency powers. But do we keep this in, legally, should we keep this in place? Because this could go on for another six months, and state of emergency is a very high state of alert. It's the highest state of alert we could have in our city.
Well, I'm familiar with the case in Michigan, and I think that, you know, forgive me for using the word extreme, but I think the governor was extreme in many respects, and that's what got the governor of Michigan into trouble. Having said that, I would tend to agree with Lynn. The way that I always conceptually looked at this, when the city was considering it, is what is the state doing first and foremost, and what is the county doing? And do you really want to be out in front of the pack? Or do you want to remain with the pack and especially be consistent, you know, with both the county and the state? That's where I think you still are, and I think it's an issue that you should revisit in the not-so-distant future. And to me, the appropriate thing would be, don't do it, change anything, but agree tonight that this would be brought up a month from now, because, like I said a minute ago, the last four months have just seemed like such a roller coaster up and down, and at times, it's changing on a week-to-week basis, where you think you're almost through it, and then you're back to the situation we're facing today, where it seems like it's just running rampant. But that would be my suggestion.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm the person who would release it, so I'm good with that explanation. We'll revisit this in November.
One other comment, that one thing about Bel Air Beach that is a unique feature is, you don't have retail and commercial. And if you have retail and commercial, I think it would be a whole different calculation, but, you know, because it's all residential, you're simply going to maintain the status quo, which we hope changes soon, back to, let's get back to normal life.
Okay, we'll revisit this in November, at the November meeting again, and see, and, you know, obviously, I don't think anything's gonna change that rapidly in terms of finding a cure or something. Okay, anything else for the city manager?
One last thing, our meeting in November, the first Monday, the next day is election, so you're probably gonna get a very light agenda. So maybe you could celebrate.
Well, thanks, Lynn, after what you did to us tonight.
Because the election people have to come in, and we really need to, and as it stands now, it's gonna be an in-person meeting, so.
Yes. And I sent something to Patty Gentry. The Florida League of Cities basically elaborated on the governor's thing, said basically, they gave us this month to get our transition ready, and we'll be transitioning, it looks like, next month. So.
Right.
So, okay. City clerk?
No, nothing.
I have one question for you, Patty. I think I heard the answer tonight, but I just wanted to, I wanted the explanation of what happened with the beginning of the meeting last month.
It was pretty much just what the vice mayor said, you know, there was a, and you had said, you know, there was a last-minute phone call, then we had to scramble to make a last-minute phone call to the vice mayor to get him on board, and then trying to get everything set up with the meeting, and it just ran into the actual start of the meeting.
So the recording just wasn't set till later?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for the city clerk? City, we go to city council comments. October's an even month, so we start alphabetically with Robin Aki.
I'm good. Nothing.
Marv Beam?
No, nothing tonight, thank you.
Dave Gaddis?
Stay safe and healthy.
I want to thank everyone, all the attendees who actually made it to the end. Very cool. It's nice to see quite a few people. We've got 16 right now. Well, not include, sorry, 15. Also, I think it's a, it was a great meeting for us tonight. We managed to accomplish a lot, and everyone stayed pretty civil, so very cool. Other than that, Patty, I would like to get with you sometime this week, and find out what's going on with your computer, and see if we can make the start of these meetings a little smoother. We seem to be having rough starts on each one of them, and maybe we just need to practice, or maybe something's truly wrong with your computer.
No, it's not my, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you. No, it's not the computer. My computer's fine. When we were using the ear pods, it went really smooth. Everything went fine, but they only last for three and a half hours, so, and then they would die. And so then, you know, we got a plug-in headset, and that's when trying to get the plug-in set up differently than the ear pods is, it's what's throwing it off. I had it going, and then it lost the picture, and then we lost the sound, but, so it was going. So I would appreciate it. That'd be great, Dave. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, okay.
And that's all I have. And Dave, I just wanted to thank you. I know you, you know, this has not been easy with setting up all these crazy remote systems and everything else, and you put a lot of effort into doing it, and my thanks from the city for all your efforts on that. You're welcome.
Thanks. Jody Shirley, you're next.
So I don't want to open a can of worms or bring up a topic, but I mentioned this to Lynn, and I just want to make sure that Lynn, you get an opportunity to talk to Fred about it, and that is regarding condos and their short-term rentals, and how they're able to continue to operate when we have a code in place against short-term rentals. So we need to deal with that. So if you and Fred will review that, then we can, well, I'd like to say we can discuss it at the work session, but I'm not gonna be at the October 19th work session. I'll be out of town, so just giving you a heads up on that, too.
Jody, you can zoom in on that if you want. That's still gonna be virtual.
As long as I have internet access. So, yeah, that might be a little bit hard, but we'll see. But that's it. Thank you all. Great meeting.
Thank you. Rita Swoe?
Yes. Actually, I want to direct something to City Manager Lynn Reeves. Can you put on the work session for us to have a discussion about some type of recognition for the Purcell's and their, you know, respecting the blue? for the Purcells, and in their, you know, respecting the blue, I'd like to see something happen there, as well as many other people have asked me about it, other than that, I'm good, I don't have anything else.
Will do. Glenn Gunn?
Good meeting, and kudos to Dave Gaddis for being adaptable and, uh, keeping this thing, uh, going on the fly, good job, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, um, I, I have a few items, um, first, I, I attended the last Big C, actually, most of this comes from the, it all comes from the Big C, um, first, Jody is gonna break your heart, but you lost the vote for Forward Pinellas, eight to one, I voted for you on behalf of Bel Air Beach, and there was one abstention, so, um, unfortunately, we didn't win that one, but, um, so Cookie Kennedy will be representing the Big C on that one, um, regarding short-term rentals, uh, Mary Beth Henderson, I believe, from in, from Reddington Shores, I think it is, they have done apparently extensive work, and they, they have the same situation that we do with the grandfather, um, short-term rental bill, but they addressed all of these, uh, like, party houses and stuff, which I don't think is a big problem in our city, but she was nice enough, and she said her attorneys did a tremendous amount of work on this, she was nice enough to share with us that, um, that, the results, that, that, uh, the, um, resolution that they came up with, so, I'm going to, Jody, hopefully you can make it, I'm gonna put this on the, another thing, Lynn, for our work session, but I'm gonna put this on, I'm gonna get a copy of that over to the city clerk, so you all can get it, and then we, I haven't really delved into it, but we can discuss it, it might be something we wanna use to supplement our code, obviously, Fred Riley's going to have to get, make the final decision on this, because I was always told never to mess with the short-term rental ordinance, um, but they were able to do it, and they didn't mess with their short-term rental ordinance, in fact, they were even talking about places like Indian Rocks using it, where I guess they had messed with it, and lost their grandfathering, so, apparently, it's a really good ordinance, I'm gonna send it over to everybody, we can discuss it, see if we have any interest in it, and I think to Jody Shirley's point, I, yes, I think that bears consideration, it's amazing that one segment of our city can rent short-term, and then another can't, and when I look at these crime reports, 'cause I, I request, um, uh, everyone can request this, you can get on the sheriff's list of crimes in the area, um, most of these crimes, most of this domestic violence, most of this stuff we're seeing, is happening in those, in those condos and those rental areas, so, um, it, it, it's, it's bringing in some issues, I think, to our city that we may wanna consider, so, uh, good point on that, and I thank everybody for a meeting, there's a couple tough spots, but I think we've worked our way through it, and I think it went well, last topic, and I thought I would bring this up to the council, Bel Air Beach is, I, I already spoke to Lynn and Patty about this, I got a decision today from the Mayor Serrano, who's the chairman of the Big C, we're supposed to host next month, I'm not exactly sure the date, in October, it's probably around the 21st or something like that, 20th, something like that, but we're supposed to host that here in Bel Air Beach, they thought that it was gonna be an in-person meeting, turns out now that, you know, we can do virtual, the issue really comes down to, he threw it to me, and he said, you make the decision, and I said, well, I'll bring it to the council tonight, and most importantly, Lynn and Patty, because you're the ones who really have to put this thing together, the issue is this, we typically run about 30 to 40 to even 50 people at those meetings, okay, you have to provide a breakfast, they've said that if we provide breakfast, they don't want a buffet, they want it to be handheld stuff that can go fast, you're gonna have to do social distancing, but we are still, as a council, meeting virtually, so, um, you know, I, I, I guess I go, I, I, I'm not gonna ask Fred how he's got, I am gonna ask you, Fred, you certainly have the opportunity to speak, but I, I know Fred Riley's gonna say, if you have a safer alternative, take it, okay, and the safer alternative is to do this virtually, and not, just not put ourselves into this thing, um, you know, somebody comes here and has a problem, then it's gonna be our problem, I also think that it's going to exhaust our manpower, because, you know, where we normally would just have to have a setup and stuff, I think we're now gonna have to be directing people and making sure they don't pile up at the check-in lines and stuff like that, so, I don't think anybody would be too hurt if we said no, but I wanna open it up to the council and to our city management.
Mayor, I would say leave it virtual, we're, we're staying, we're staying virtual till November 1st, so I would leave it virtual.
I agree, Marv Beam?
Same thing, leave it virtual.
Virtual, no bacon and eggs, though, Marv, if you do that.
I know, I'm, I'm losing, I'm losing weight over this.
He wasn't gonna get, he wasn't gonna get bacon and eggs, he's gonna get an apple.
That's the best part about the meeting, Dave Gaddis?
Vir- virtual breakfast.
Virtual breakfast, yeah, my virtual bacon and eggs, I think we're all in cons, we, we all, uh, agree, it's virtual, right? No one disagrees? Okay, that's all I had, uh, I thank you very much for, for the good meeting, we'll see everybody on the 19th, and if we get a motion to adjourn in a second, we will go home at 10 o'clock, we beat our 1 o'clock record here, anyone have a motion?
Tell them.
10 a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, everyone have a good night, stay safe.
Stay safe and healthy.
Thanks, thank you.